Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone. Before we -- thank you. I was trying to get one trustee's attention. Before we begin, I got these two, you know, chatty Kathys down here that I just don't know what to do.
I'm mentoring. You assign me as a mentor.
Namaste. Before we begin the meeting, Dr. Lindsay has some remarks.
It was so profound. I'll just make it quick. I want to say thank you to the constituent group leadership and other people that are here in various roles throughout the college to listen to this really important message. I'm not sure the last time I actually saw so many people coming into the budget workshop. So this is really, obviously, something that people care about. And thank you for taking the time to come and listen and participate. We really, really need your voices. And I also want to thank Andrew and Sue for all the work that they've done and Melissa. But I just want to make sure that we welcome everybody. And when people come and go, it's probably because of teaching schedules.
Okay. Got it. Did Sandy have any comments? Trustee Moore, did you have any comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Thank you. I want to -- pardon me. As Chair of the Budget Committee, I want to commend everyone who has worked so hard. Melissa, Andrew, Sue, your work has been remarkable. I don't know how you put this together. And on top of it, did the -- our new facilities master plan on top of all that. I hope you can sleep after all of this because your work has been just remarkable. I also want to thank the Board of Trustees for being here today. This is an important meeting, and we welcome everyone from the college constituency groups, too. It's important for you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Since we're in thank you mode, I want to thank the staff for showing up at O'Dark 100, getting this meeting going. Amazing. I know how early you guys got up and got in here. So, thank you very much. Okay, I'm calling this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Monica to call the roll, please.
Sure, trustees, when I say your name, please say present if you're here. So Chair Chen.
Present.
Vice Chair Price Jones.
Present.
Trustee Chadri. Trustee Keller.
Present.
Trustee Moore.
Present.
Trustee Pastroni.
Present.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Trustee Rodriguez will be here in about five minutes.
Trustee Stanton Batrom.
Present.
Trustee Tuminalo.
Present.
Trustee Yuvala.
Present.
Thank you. Chair Chen, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Monica. Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Monica, could you please take the vote?
Sure. Trustees, when I call your name, please state your vote. Chair Chen.
Yes. Approve.
Vice Chair Price Jones.
Approve.
Trustee Keller.
Approved.
Trustee Moore.
Approved.
Trustee Pastroni.
Approved.
Trustee Stanton Batrom.
Approved.
Trustee Tuminalo.
Approved.
And Trustee Yuvala.
Approve.
Chair Chen, the motion passes.
Okay, that's wonderful. So, to everybody in the room, including the board, please feel free. This is a workshop. Get up, get food, get refreshments, move around as we go through this amazing material that Melissa and her team put together. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Lindsay for opening remarks and to get the workshop started. Thank you.
Obviously, a lot of the credit that we're going to be sharing today is the work of Melissa and Andrew and Sue. And what you have brought us through and how you've gotten us to this point is amazing. So before you even start, I want to say thank you. But I'm sure there's going to be a lot of kudos afterwards to see the work that you have put together. So with that, we're all here for the workforce. So I'm going to turn it over to Vice President Beardmore.
Good morning, everyone. If we're giving out thank yous, I'd like to thank my colleagues to the right, my colleague VPs, because we do -- and of course, the President, because we do build this budget collaboratively, as you'll see. So, thank you all. And of course, thank you to Sue and Andrew. Do want to emphasize that this is an interactive session. So in addition to the chair's comments, please stop us. We're going to move fairly quickly through the material, but there is plenty of time for you to ask your questions. And there are no silly questions. So please, stop us and ask if you have questions, whether it's about the slides or the materials, the background materials. So for today, this is a workshop, as the chair stated. So we will take any feedback that you have and incorporate that into the budget that you are going to approve on February 25th at your public meeting. You are not voting today. This is an information session, a work session, for you to get oriented to the budget. We are scheduled -- and then we turn that around. You approve it on the 25th, and then we turn that right around and submit it to the county executive. Submit the budget that you approved to the county executive in writing by March 1st. And we are scheduled to present our budget formally to the county executive on March 24th. They limit the number of folks that can be in person in the conference room. So the President, myself, and Andrew will be in person, and you have the opportunity as board members to participate via Zoom. All righty. And I'm going to try to advance slides while looking at my information here.
Actually, Melissa, could I just -- to our new trustees, I'd like to encourage you to participate in the Zoom. It does make a good showing to the county when the trustees are paying attention. Thank you.
That's a great point. And it'll be helpful for you to hear the questions that are asked because our budget becomes a component -- and we'll talk about this. Our budget becomes a component of the county executive's budget. He can decide whether he wishes to fully fund or reduce our request. And then it becomes the county council's budget when he submits it to the county council formally on May 1. Was there a question?
Yes, thank you. So I RSVP'd to the college, but then we received communications from the county executive. Do I RSVP to his office also? No. Grazie.
That was the hardest question I've had so far. So I'm glad Monica was able to answer that. Very good. So this is merely an official disclosure regarding the information presented today. Again, it's draft until you approve it at your February 25th meeting. This is our agenda. We're going to talk a lot about numbers today, but it is important that the budget is a financial manifestation of our priorities. Ultimately, our budget is about meeting the needs of students and providing resources to transfer the lives of our students. To that end, this is our agenda. I do want to highlight, and I'll talk about it in a little bit, you'll see little footnotes on the slides, and that refers to what we'll call the budget background materials that you've received about a week ago. The cover page looks like this. They should be in diligent. Okay. So it gets a little confusing because you're looking at the slides, and then you'll say see -- it'll see -- it will say on the slide, C page numbers 12 and 13. That's referring to this background material. Okay. As we talk today, it's helpful to be reminded of our mission, how it focuses our work. And before we get into the details of the budget, we'd like to spend a few minutes providing you some context for you. And we'll start with the current year, fiscal '25 operating budget status report. So you see that little footnote there on the lower left, C page 5. So that's -- there's more information in your background materials on page 5. All right. So this is our operating budget status report as of 12/31, again, for the current year. The good news is that for the current year, we have a balanced budget. So we are living within our means, if you will, and are projected to be within our -- what we call our appropriation authority. And that's important because in that expenditure section there for the budget, that's what the county council approves us to spend. If we want to spend a dollar more, we have to go ask them formally for approval. So some items to note, good news, not expected, that tuition and fee revenue is projected to exceed the budget by 4%. And that's due to increased student enrollment that we're seeing. And that likely will change a little bit. We'll continue to work through the budget committee, providing them updates when they meet as we finish out the spring semester. As a result of the revenue over attainment, you see -- and projected expenditure savings, you see on that TSF and auxiliary transfer line in the FY 2025 projected column, you see that negative $622,000. And that's where we are -- this is where Trustee Yuvala says that's actually a good thing. A negative is a good thing here, that we are currently projecting to add $622,000 to our tuition stabilization fund. And again, that will change, but that's based on our current estimates. And that's versus spending, as you see in the fiscal 2025 budget column, versus spending $4.3 million in our current year budget. I do want to call your attention -- actually, footnotes four through eight there on the very right-hand column indicate, except for number seven, we'll talk about number seven in a minute, indicate that we are projecting savings and expenditures, and that's primarily due to savings in salaries and benefits, AKA turnover savings, along with estimated savings in non-compensation expenditures. So paper and supplies and things like that. And again, those estimates will change as we fill positions and have future resignations and retirement. But I did want to spend a few minutes on that plant operations and maintenance line. That's item number -- indicated by footnote number seven. This is a positive number all the way on that right-hand corner because, not surprisingly, we are projecting to be over budget in this expenditure category. And that's for a couple of different reasons. It's been cold. We've had snow. So we have expenses, overtime expenses for folks to clear the snow. But also, not surprisingly, if you've received your BGE email lately, that we are seeing huge increases in utilities. Now, we are in a consortium for gas and electric. So that means we participate with other school systems, governments, to harness our collective purchasing power to get great rates. However, there are increases in the distribution rates as power production facilities transition to renewable energy sources, and they're being a little bit slow to come online. And the retirement of the older facilities is causing a shortage, which is driving up the rates. So -- and we do -- we are -- we do have energy efficiency programs in place. We are just projecting, not just, we are projecting, that we are going to need to make a transfer, likely from the instruction category, where we do have savings, to cover a projected deficit in plants. So we're not going to overspend our total budget. We just need to move money around, as I said. And that does require going to the county council for legislation, and that's not unusual for us. That hasn't happened in a few years. But we do -- the school system does that. The county will make transfers between categories. So because the county council approves in those categories, if we're going to reconfigure things, move from savings from instruction to cover that utilities deficit, then we'll go -- we'll let the county know, and we'll go to the county council and get approval. Does that make sense? Please.
Yeah. Question for you. We know that the -- pardon me. BGE rates have a stepped increase through June, and that the legislators are proposing a bill to freeze those increases. We hope that goes through. All of our bills hope that goes through. Would that affect the consortium, do you think, or not enough to make a huge difference to this number?
I think, I don't know.
Thank you.
That's residential primarily, so it might be different for us. But we are -- it's great to be part of this consortium because we get a lot of information. So they give us newsletters and things like that. So we'll keep the budget committee informed on that, you know. We'll say. No matter what, we know we're going to be over. So we'll still make that transfer based on our best guess estimates. Probably we'll go the council in May or June. May.
I also had a question. So prior back to when we talked last week, you were saying the county does a third of our primary budget. But to do anything with our budget, we need their approval for everything? Or?
So you're saying -- let me make sure I understand your question. You're saying that generally, they -- and we'll look at a slide on the percentages of what they -- the county actually contributes to our budget. Yeah, roughly, they're actually kind of -- I think they're at 38% of our budget. You're asking, we still, even though it's a portion, they still approve the total budget? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, because like, for example, if you guys wanted to use tuition, like, that 31% to cover something, do you need the county's approval? Or we can do that internally?
Great question. So what the county approves, do you see in the expense section, the five categories of expense, instruction, student support services, et cetera? And you see the numbers in, let's just do fiscal 2025 budget, the $64 million, the $22.2 million, you follow me? They approve those numbers. They give us appropriation authority, the authority to spend in those categories at those amounts. If we want to spend a dollar more in instruction, technically, we have to go to them for appropriation authority, even though they only provide 38% of our budget. They are the ultimate appropriation authority, the county council, over the college, and that's by law.
Okay.
Great question. Okay. Continuing our context for the budget before we jump into the fun numbers part, Andrew's going to walk us through, just to talk a little bit about the environment, whether it's national or local, that we're working in, and some observations that internally, externally, that we've made through different conversations at the college, different data that we've collected that's impacting, that we're seeing currently, as you saw Dr. Patterson presented recently in her enrollment report, but also that we see coming downstream that will impact how we allocate our resources. So Andrew?
I believe it is. So as Melissa was saying, typically, as we start to develop the budget, we do a general impact scan. What's going on in the environment? What do we expect to see? And so as we were doing this, consistent with presentations the boards received over the last few months, things that we're seeing is increasing headcount, increasing FTE, dual enrollment, one of those things that we've talked about before, blueprint may have been referred to. We're seeing a stabilization of that enrollment. We think it's peaked, given the new legislation and how that program is being administered at the school system. And so we factored that into our planning. We're also seeing growth in the over 20 population, so starting to see adult growth again, as well as minority student population in both Black, African-American, and the Hispanic-Latino environment. We are still anticipating enrollment challenges. So that's the sort of the positives of what we're seeing from an enrollment perspective. We're still seeing things from the anticipated national decline in college-age students. We've been sort of isolated from that. Anaromont County has been able to attract more populations into the environment, so we haven't seen that decline in the high school population yet. It is still projected. So we're paying attention to that. And that's just that general under-18 population declining, and that's going to -- projected to decrease the graduation rates. We still have the challenge of the shifting perception and questioning of higher education and its value. And so we're definitely monitoring that, shifting programming to support our efforts towards that. I think you can switch to the next slide. Then things that we're also watching from an operational perspective, Melissa talked about inflation on utilities, we have other operational costs that we're seeing. As we continue and look at things and the implications from the new administration, potentially on tariffs, and what that might mean for general cost increases, say, computers, we're definitely monitoring that. Supply chain limitations created by all of those things, particularly as we look at our capital programs. We're definitely in a competitive and evolving labor market. There's lots of debate about what's going on at the federal government level, what that's going to mean for workforce going forward. But we're currently in an environment of very constrained staffing resources, very competitive market. Retention continues to improve. That's a good sign for us. Graduation rates are consistent with our enrollment patterns, and we've had some success. When we look at our comparison of completion rates compared to other institutions, we're doing better in the state than many other institutions when you look at the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond success rates. And so that is still having us continue to focus on student retention and completion. That's a big focus as we go through and look at our priorities in a couple more slides. But that was just the context as we started to build things, focus our priorities, what are we seeing? How do we adjust to that? And that's something we do each year as we go through the process and discuss with the committee.
Andrew, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And it's one I've been thinking about a lot, and it goes to the environmental analysis. We have, at the MAC legislative session, reception, there was a speaker who said 60% of Americans no longer believe in higher education. We have an administration now in the White House that is dismantling the Department of Education. How are you guys looking at -- we've got four years of this administration. How is that How are you guys looking at, we've got four years of this administration, how is that changing, if at all, your view of our college's budget down the road, whether it's Pell funding, other federal funding, things like that?
I can start, and I bet my colleagues and the president won't.
I know, it's a tough question.
Well, it's a very appropriate question, and I think the president has shared that we've created an internal team similar to how we handled COVID, because we are looking at all of these changes, almost like an emergency situation as COVID was. It was constantly evolving, we had to be, we had to get the best information that we can, and we're relying heavily on general counsel, because unlike COVID, it's highly regulatory, it's highly legal this time. So she is an invaluable resource to us in navigating through this. So we've structured, we set up the structure that we feel like it works, and we have functional experts on that team in areas like, you know, DEIA for our class, you know, for the college community, DIA for the workforce, financial aid, et cetera. So we feel like we've put the structure in place to respond appropriately. Here's a challenge, it's chaotic, it changes very frequently, so it's something that we have to have the right approach so that we don't overreact, we react appropriately and with sound legal counsel. So I'll just leave it at that in terms of the, we could do hours, honestly, on that structure, and, you know, we'll do the best that we can. In terms of the budget, we do have, I think there's a slide, it's certainly in your background material, the college gets, we're budgeting in 26, 18 million, 18 million in 2026 for federal financial aid. So that's funds that come through Pell, to your point, federal work-study, veterans, et cetera, comes to our students, to the college, to pay their tuition and fees. We, again, unknown, uncertainty, chaos, but thus far, from the federal, what I'll call edicts that have come through, whether through OMB memos or executive orders, those programs have been exempt from any pauses or freezes, which we know are also under a temporary restraining order. So we have to plan appropriately, knowing that those, I hate to even say it, but those funds could be in jeopardy. As of right now, those funds are still in place for our students. We also do, we also get some federal grants, but it's not a huge amount of money. So I think we're, we're doing the best we can, knowing that information is changing, information can be challenged, or rulings can be challenged in the courts through this team structure, while also looking, and we're going to talk a little bit, I have some thoughts that I'll share about our tuition stabilization fund, or our fund balance, and how that, having that healthy fund balance, as we saw when the bridge collapsed in an emergency like that, was helpful. In times of uncertainty like this, that fund balance or tuition stabilization fund is also important to help cover us in the event that, you know, we do have a revenue shortfall, hopefully it's temporary, that we need to, you know, keep payroll going and keep the lights on. My colleagues want to add to that?
I'll say grant.
Okay. Okay, it's a great question. All right. So, oh, I need my glasses. So we'll wrap up our report on the context for our budget by sharing some assessment measures through, through a fiscal lens. So our vision is what we strive for, and our mission is how we're going to get there, and mission mandates drive how we get there. And the, the mission provides the context for our budget. And again, this budget is a tool to help us accomplish our strategic goals. So we know the board is interested in how efficient we are, and we, we are accountable as to how we compare to other Maryland community colleges, and we hold ourselves to very high standards, and the Government Finance Officers Association agrees with us. Looking at my colleague Sue over here, we received the inaugural award for excellence in budgeting in 2017, and each year that we have applied, we did take a little break in 2023 because of COVID, it was a little busy, so very, kudos to my colleague Sue Callahan for her vision and dedication in pursuing this award. And we did receive it in 2025, too. I don't know if I mentioned that. When the Maryland Association of Community Colleges provides comparative information about the Maryland community colleges, it's on their website if you want to peruse it. On the screen are some measures that we use to look at how we're allocating our resources compared to other Maryland community colleges. And I think, you know, we invest in what's important, and that's evidenced by what's on that third bullet there, showing as a percentage, in terms of the percentage of our budget, we are the highest in allocating our operating budget in support of students, so instruction and academic support. Last few years, we've had the fourth lowest tuition, we'll talk about that. And again, the page numbers there are your background materials, okay, I'll stop saying that now. And on the next slide, a little bit more information regarding the affordability mission mandate, providing some measures here on this slide. We just talked about the Pell Award, that's a need-based federal grant for undergraduate students, okay. It's estimated to fully cover tuition and fees and estimated books for eligible students. And as always, I think Volly's here, yes, we are grateful for the support of our AAACC Foundation and its donors, providing in private donations and scholarships for our students. And wowzers, almost $2 million budgeted for this year, I think Volly 10 years ago, it was 450,000, yeah, okay. So that's a huge sum of money for our students, and that's in addition to operating support for strategic programs that the foundation provides. So huge help to the college and the students, so we appreciate our foundation partners so much. We'll discuss more later, but this budget does include a $5 tuition rate increase, and we are happy to report our continued textbook affordability efforts that help offset a tuition rate increase, and in fact, are projected to save students the annualized equivalent of $5 in, in the current year in tuition. So we expect those savings to continue for students as we continue those affordability efforts. Oh, sorry.
Just, I would just like to make a comment about the two, the textbook affordability. I just got back from the ACT Legislative Conference, and there were students speaking too, which was amazing, and one of their number one concerns is the talk, is the cost of textbooks. They're really concerned about that, so just, you know.
Not surprising, that's been evergreen, I can remember, as an accounting student, they weren't, they were not cheap then.
No, medical, medical textbooks are unbelievable.
Oh, my gosh. And really important, it's a great point, and really important for us to acknowledge that that's, while we have a bookstore, that's not the bookstore setting those prices, it's the publishers that set those prices. So we do have a wonderful, I didn't talk about it, but we do have a direct digital access or inclusive access, and that's a program wherein, and Andrew will correct me if I'm wrong, but, but for digital course materials, digital course materials to be delivered directly to students, and they get them on or before the first day of class, so it's digital, they don't have to shlep themselves to the bookstore, and much, much more affordable, digital course materials are about 44% cheaper on average, and, and it's built into, baked into the tuition rate for the class, the tuition.
Fees, right.
The fees that students pay for that class. So that's just another way that we make things affordable. So that's an example, and we talk about this in other areas, where what's good for students, and we know that's, to your point, it's absolutely good for students to have affordable materials, not always good for the bottom line, but we recognize that, you know, our affordability mandate expands not just to, it expands to all operations. Thank you. Sue, a little bit more on our efficiency, we make great effort to contain costs where we can. Salaries and benefits are about 85% of our budget, but we do look at other cost categories for savings. Project Sunburst is the name for the carport solar panels that we have on Parking Lot A, you know, years ago, but they still generate savings. I mentioned Energy Consortium that we're in, that's, that, where we see the utilities, and that does generate savings fairly significant. And as enrollment has declined, we've cut back significantly on part-time faculty, or adjusted, I don't want to say cut back, I shouldn't say that, adjusted our part-time faculty costs, and we've become more efficient in scheduling towards student demand and through our academic portfolio and resources review, therefore, that's the largest area of cost efficiency. We've also reallocated positions and funds this year in support of our critical strategic initiatives, and in times when there's limited funding, as you'll see, from the state and county in tuition and fees, it's really important, we move funds, this is not real, but it's kind of a silly example, when we take a vacant groundskeeper position and decide that we're going to reallocate that position to perhaps someone in advising, because that's a higher area of need, so we take that salary dollars and move it over into an area and just let the grass grow longer, I guess. So, and you'll notice, I bet you've noticed, that many of these items are older, so I keep them on the slide because they're important to show the work that we've done, but our ability to find areas of cost containment are getting harder and harder. Once you squeeze the juice out of that, that fruit, it's, it's gone. So, you know, we really have to look at positions for savings, okay? But I keep them on the slide because we did do this work. Okay. So lastly, I know you're anxious to get to the budget. On our context journey, we want to provide an update on the status of compensation program. Compensation has been the focus of any new funds in our budget the past few years, as we continue, as Andrew shared, as we continue to compete for talent in this new post-COVID paradigm, and compensation is obviously important, it's 85% of our budget, and compensation including benefits, and really, we know this, but the success of our college is attributable to our talented faculty and staff. So it's our, it's people, and that's why it's a priority in our budget. There's several pages, as you see in your background materials, with a lot more data to put compensation into context. We do have a history of examining administrative practices, and, you know, that's a good practice and supports middle states institutional assessment concept. And way back in fiscal 15, the board asked us to review our compensation systems, and we did that, and we had, through our current faculty compensation committee, and there was a separate staff compensation committee that was created, and they worked in kind of the example of shared governance, to review and update our compensation, compensation systems several years ago. And the staff also revamped the evaluation process, and since then, the faculty have also updated their evaluation process, so assessing and updating. But anyway, our compensation system, and we do have a board compensation policy, we haven't reviewed it again, and I'm sure we will, it's kind of in that old format, but it's, it's high-level enough that shows the goals of transparency, ease of implementation, consistency, equity, and it's also more fiscally and administratively sustainable than the previous system was. And we're pretty much implemented, and we, we have, we have fully implemented these systems. However, in order to maintain the fidelity of the comp system, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, we need adequate funding. So it's a market-based system, and if salary increases don't increase more than the labor market percentage, usually depending on the year, about 2% or 3%, employees would not be eligible to move through the salary range within the system, and we'll get into that in a few minutes. On the next slide, just some highlights of some of the data that you see on pages 17 to 19, there's oogabs of examples of, of data that I think puts into perspective what you'll see in our budget, we've budgeted for, for compensation. This is a fun little chart, and we do share this when we present to the county executive and the county council. More comparative data, and as I said, really important for when we present to the county, chart shows how we compare to other county entities. Non-rep means non-represented or non-unionized employees at the county, okay? And then teachers at Anarond County Public Schools, and then our colleagues at the library, smaller population, but, you know, we still show it for comparative purposes. And fiscal '20 was the first year where we were fully implemented within that new compensation system for faculty and staff. And as I said, the system is challenges, is challenged when we don't have enough funding for pay increases. And we know it was COVID time, but you see in fiscal '21, we could only afford one-time payments. So that kind of sets us behind when we have a situation like that. So, you know, when you look at this comparative data, our pool, and we use a salary pool to distribute the funds, it's lag the county's non-unionized employees, that non-rep column, teachers and the library employees. So that helps us the context for what you're going to see in terms of a salary increase in our budget. And as Andrew mentioned, on the staff side and in faculty, we have many, many, and it's in those pages 17 to 19, we have many areas where it's very difficult to hire folks. I think that came up in our little budget session last week, you know, in the technical areas, and now you asked that question. Many areas across the college, we're seeing multiple times, we're going out to search for a position, we're losing our top candidates because they can go somewhere else, they've got job offers that are more lucrative for them, so it's really important that, I think, we maintain the fidelity of that comp system for, for those reasons. For, for faculty, in 2005, the board set a goal to be ranked in the top three of the large community colleges, and this slide, we provide this slide to the board for many, many years, there's more, it's also on page 16 of your materials. One change this year that I want to make sure that we're clear about, we used to obtain information on this, from this, for the slide, through an informal survey of our HR colleagues at other community colleges. And we have learned this year that that data isn't always consistent or accurate obtained through those informal surveys, so we've decided that it's best to provide you with consistent, albeit older, data. So this chart, you'll see, it's noted, it's from the fiscal 2024 MHEC data book. So it's good data, it's dated, dated data. So it's for fall of 2023, so it doesn't affect, reflect the fiscal 2025 data, but we felt it, we wanted assurances that it was accurate. Okay. Note on this slide, oh, CY, we love, CY is current year, PY is prior year, we just couldn't fit it all on the slide. Okay, so current year, prior year, colleges down on the left, and then by category. So these are for faculty, the professor, associate professor, assistant professor, and instructor, and then you see our rank, that's how, what number we are in that group. Okay. So we've maintained levels at the associate professor, yes, where we are second, and we've lost ground in all other ranks. Now, again, this is average salaries, this is not the range, these are actual average salaries for folks, so it can be a, it's a function of the demographics of those folks. You might have an institution where folks are more seasoned and are in the higher range of those ranks, and that's why the, the numbers might be higher. I do know that Baltimore County did a huge market increase, I want to say two years ago, but it could have been three, or it could have been one, it was recently, I'll say two years. So we're seeing the impacts of those large increases here, Baltimore, so that's CCBC, Community College of Baltimore County. It used to be Montgomery was number one across all categories, but after that, that huge market study, and I can't say where they found the money, but I do know they implemented huge increases for folks as a result of that study, so that's why they are number one, yeah, almost in all categories. And I think this chart helps emphasize, again, that 6% pool that you're going to see for compensation increases in this budget. This chart compares part-time faculty rates, and as a reminder, part-time faculty are subject to collective bargaining, which you'll, you'll hear an update on that in the future, not today, in a future conversation. So this data is obtained, is for the current year, fiscal '25, and we obtain that via college websites. That's more easily provided because these are rates, okay? These are the rates that are paid for part-time faculty versus the previous, which was actual salaries. So most of our part-time folks are at level two, yes, Dr. Milner? Okay. Where we rank second, in fact, we're second across the board. And level three is a level that we added, I think, four years ago, to provide some salary progression for part-time faculty. And level four is reserved for a full-time retired faculty. And overall, I think we, we compare And overall, I think we, we compare quite, quite favorably here with some close grouping in the middle levels. Time for the fiscal 26 operating budget, after all that context. So we tend to build our budget in this order, starting with expenses that are expenditures that are absolutely necessary to support our strategic priorities. And the members of the budget committee have seen this information several times, but it's important because it grounds us. We follow best practices in budgeting, which includes setting high-level guiding principles. We measure and assess the proposed budget against these principles. And I think that's what's on page six, yes. But also, there's a fun little, what we call red light, green light document. And that's on page nine and 10 and 11, maybe 12, 10, 11, where we measure ourselves and the colors on those, on that, on those pages indicate green, where we're like, yeah, we're doing okay, yellow or red, we think we have some challenges. And then those guiding principles continue. And let's see, we also have budget development priorities. Oops. Okay. Similar to previous years. And we categorize our, you'll see this categorization when I show you some more numbers. This shows how we, the categories we use to prioritize our new expenditures in this budget. So how do we build this, the budget? This chart reflects our budget development process, kind of in numbers. We build it from the ground up. And I know my colleagues behind me love this process. Departments submit requests. So for fiscal 26, 76 projects, our requests were submitted totaling 4.8 million. And then as we moved down the chart, they submitted their requests to their deans and directors who added to the list, which is why the number went up, both in projects to 111, to 7.6 million. And then it goes to the VP, the president and the VPs. And we're the mean ones who bring things back down to 78 projects that we move forward, five totaling 5.3 million. And this is why I commend my colleagues in the vetting process that we go through with the limited new funds we have. It's very collaborative and collegiate in terms of collegiate? That's not the right, collegial, thank you. English professor there. Collegial in terms of how we work through that, that vetting process. And it's all through our current automated budget system. And ultimately, as the revenue picture becomes more clear, we're only able, and I'll show you what base adjustments are, we're only able to focus on the base budget adjustments. And one project that we decided that we needed to move forward in the budget, and we'll look at that in a second. So here are the numbers. And this is showing a quick summary of the categories that we just looked at of expenditures that we'll delve into in just a second. But this shows the change over the fiscal 2025 budget. There at the top, the 138 million. And you see it's only a $6.2 million change, if you will, and that the overwhelming majority, that 5.2 million, we'll say, is compensation. And we'll walk through each category, starting with base assumptions. This is what we call the category that we use for increased costs associated with existing services and activity. Stuff we're already doing that's going to cost more. We've talked ad nauseam about utilities, but that's the big number here in this category. We currently keep the lights on and things heated and air conditioning. It's going to cost more primarily because of inflation. The revenue offsets, that's a category for items that have a corresponding revenue, have a corresponding revenue change. So it's kind of an offset, revenue and expense. And next, compensation. Okay. We talked about this, the, the goal that the board set in 2005 to be at a certain level with faculty, with respect to faculty salaries. And I think I've given up the headline here. We do have in this budget a 6% compensation adjustment pool. And our faculty compensation committee requested, and they submit a formal report to us, again, in honor of shared governance, they do their due diligence and they send a formal recommendation to us, they requested a 9% pool. There's a staff compensation committee, they did their work, their research, and they submitted a request for a 5% pool. So faculty suggested 9%, staff suggested 5%. When we did our budget vetting and looked at what we think the state is going to come forward with us in the county and what we're going to see with tuition and fees, we felt like we can afford 6%. And we do believe that provides fidelity with our comp system. Market moving about 3%. So that's a 3% market adjustment off of that 6% pool. And then it allows for the balance, 6 minus 3, a balance of 3% for progression for folks to move through the, the salary ranks. Okay. And I think I have a slide on that a little bit more. And again, just want to make sure we're clear that wage adjustments or increases for part-time faculty are subject to collective bargaining, which is almost finished, right, Andrew? Okay. So this slide shows a detailed breakdown of that 5.2 million that we would categorize as compensation-related. Again, the first line is the impact of the 6% pool. And yes, that is more than the total 5.1 million, but we'll walk through some of the other adjustments. So to provide a pool for faculty and staff at 6%, it costs $6.3 million. Now, we also know health insurance is, we provide folks with benefits. So that 491 in health insurance, that does include a 3.5% increase to allow for an annualized 7% increase in health insurance. Health insurance is on a calendar year. So that's allowing for a rate increase January 1, 2026. Okay, so there's some funds allocated for health insurance. Our employees, we pay a portion and, the college pays a portion and employees pay a portion. So this is our share. The other items are compensation and benefit-related, based on assumptions in our budget. The last three negative items are decreases to our compensation budget. So we do have, we've talked about turnover, that's savings. When faculty and staff leave the college, the position is vacant and/or when we hire at lower levels. So we have a small increase, wait, increase. I have to think about the negative, small increase to our turnover budget. And the negative 484,000 is a decrease to the adjunct budget based on, again, thank you to our learning colleagues, active management of our class sections, and again, the results of the academic portfolio and resources review in action. The last item is a negative number because it represents true salary savings in our budget or true turnover savings of new hires in the current fiscal year versus the budgeted salary. So we roll that savings into the budget when we roll forward our compensation budget, generally in October of this year. I see if head's nodding, that's complicated, so, okay. Good. So that's the breakdown of comp adjustments. I'll pause there and see if there are any questions.
Melissa, I do have a question for the benefit of the board. We discussed it a little bit earlier. With regard to the benefits line, the employment benefits liability, net liability increase, I don't know, it's page 13 on, on our stuff. There was a hu, a huge jump for the 25 and then low on the 26. Could you please just explain what that number means?
Yes, and we do have slides on OPEB, but I don't think we hit that. So again, on page 13 of your materials, this relates to, it's not that health insurance cost, that's the health insurance cost for our current employees. It's a great question. What you're asking about is our OPEB, other post-employment benefits. That's the future liability for when folks who retire from the college and we are paying a portion of their health insurance, medical and other benefits. And goodness, again, we could do an hour on this, but years ago, Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, required folks like us and governments, all those institutions that follow government accounting standards rules, to recognize that future liability in the current year. So going from a cash pay-as-you-go system, they wanted you to pull that liability onto your financial statements, which we do. And it results in a big looming negative number. But on, on that document, on page 13, it's, that, that future liability, the future, is predicted or forecast by folks who are called actuaries. And they issue us a study and it's full of assumptions of what's going to happen in the future, sadly, when folks may die or other information about the demographics of our employees. But also things like they predict what the future investment earnings are going to be on items and dollars that we put into this trust that we have that we'll talk about. And that liability changes. So on page 13, there's a line that says projected change accounting deferrals, and it has two little asterisks. And in that first column, it's a negative 35 million. So that's kind of a good thing because it's a liability estimated to decrease, but it's all based on assumptions. So it's based on life, how long folks will live and investment returns. So it's a very accounting nerdy kind of thing versus really a budgetary. And that's a technical term. Okay, did that answer the question? So the law, the short answer is, it's the actuarial assumptions that drive that number. But I took a long time to say that. Okay. So, great question. The next category for new funds, how we're spending the new funds in our budget, is ever exciting legal and regulatory compliance. So we have bank fees because we take credit cards and you have to pay a fee to the banks to accept that credit card. Institutional insurance, a small adjustment based on what we see, you know, the analysis of the market and audit fees increasing, you know, that's kind of inflationary, if you will, because we do have an external audit. Lastly, we, this is where the results of all the work that the president and the VPs did to build this budget, we managed to carve out some funds in this budget in support of, really, one, Strategic and Student Success Initiative. And this is, this 218,000 is in support of our dental hygiene program, primarily for an adjunct contract for a supervising dentist. Yes. For the program, along with some other non-compensation expenses as we stand that program up in our beautiful, yeah, it makes my teeth hurt, lab in the Health and Life Sciences Building. It's a fabulous lab, if you haven't seen it, it looks like a dentist's office. No offense. Not a fan. All right. So another recap of the allocation of the new funds within this budget. You saw this slide already, so we just walked through the details. Again, compensation is the big number in the increase. Next, so that was the expenditures. Now we move to the revenues, how we're going to fund all that stuff. And the college is funded at the state level through the Cade Funding Formula. We're sitting in the Cade Building, named after former Senator Jack Cade. And he and his team developed this fabulous formula that ties a percentage of the annual state aid allocated per full-time equivalent students at select University System of Maryland institutions to the state aid granted per FTE to the community colleges. Isn't that just so simple? There's a huge spreadsheet, if you ever want to see it, we can send it to you, that you can see all the components of Cade. It's fascinating. But the bottom line is, through that formula, which is driven, which is important, it's driven off of our student enrollment two years prior. So the governor's budget includes a small increase for us. And you see it here, that 433,000, we're happy to have it. I was expecting flat or a cut. So based on that, 433,000, based on that formula. The Regional Higher Education Center, if you're wondering, that's funds that the state provides in support of our regional higher education center at our Rundle Mills facilities. That's where we provide, we have partners, four-year partners, that come in and provide baccalaureate degrees from a few institutions at that site, if you will. Cade Funding. The Funding Formula has been altered, I think, almost 10 times since 2008. The president testified about Cade just this week, yes? To, to Senate, probably. So the formula has been altered many times by reducing the, what's called the percentage tie. So that's the percentage of the funding that we get based on the four-year institutions. And the Cade goals, when enacted, were to provide predictable operating support for the community colleges. My two cents, it's been anything but. And really, we're so grateful that MAC Works each year to have Cade fully funded, to increase that percentage tie. Statutorily, it was supposed to be 29% for the Cade Funding Formulas. Not to be confused with a third, a third, a third. This is a percentage that University System of Maryland per FTE that we get. Again, if you want the spreadsheet, I'll be happy to send it to you to see how that, how that formula works. What it means is, and this is kind of a dated number, but because Cade has not been funded all those many years, there were a couple of years where they funded it recently, but not since, is that we did reach the statutorily defined 29% in 2023, it was short-lived. But for the community colleges statewide, it's resulted in lost revenue to all of us, not just ACC, of $100 million. Imagine that, what that could mean for our students if we didn't have to increase tuition at that level, again, statewide. It's, it's tremendous. So that's the result of Cade not being funded is, is lost, lost revenue. We did, as I mentioned, we did reach full funding in 2023, but that didn't last long. So for fiscal 26, we are at that, instead of being at 29%, we're at 27.2%. And in this current fiscal year, we are at 25.5%. So we've increased, but we're not at that 29%. As I mentioned, last year, no, this year, fiscal 25, we did have a reduction of $837,000. And it was a lot worse initially when the governor's budget came back, came out. We, through the work of, you know, the presidents and MAC, we clawed back some, but we still had a decrease. And one other note, you may have heard this, we're not going to spend any time on it, but just so you're aware, the governor's budget also did something interesting. And it shifts 14 million. This is statewide, an unexpected cost to the counties statewide to, for retirement costs. So they've, state used to fund retirement costs for folks who are in the pension systems in the state of Maryland. They're trying to, they're sliding that over and saying, counties, you, you, you pay for it. And they did this years ago with teacher pensions. So the county is aware of it, and I'm sure they're working through Mako and other groups to, to change that. But it's probably, my opinion, it's probably something that's going to happen. So if that, it's, and it's through legislation that that's happening, something called the BRFA. You may have heard that Budget Reconciliation Financing Act, which is like built-on legislation on top of the governor's budget, then those expenses become a mandated expense. So according to the county, and we'll probably hear this on the 24th, it further limits the county's flexibility and increasing competition for its already scarce resources. So didn't want you to be surprised when you read that. Oop, what happened here? Okay. We're just talking about the county. The county is, we just talked about state formulaic funding. The county is a discretionary funding partner. They can give us whatever they want. The three mil, we have a $3 million increase that we are requesting, really, you know, to help fund, you know, the compensation increase. And the first step in the process is getting the county executive, as I described, to support this funding request after the board approves the budget on the 25th. Now, the county has, there are some rules, if you will, well, there's one rule. Maintenance of effort, you may have heard of. And in order for us to be eligible for that little bit of new funding from the state, the county has to maintain level funding from year to year in total. So for fiscal, the current fiscal year, that 52 million, 52, 527,800, they can't go a dollar below that or else we're not eligible for that new state funds. And actually, I was looking at the Cade spreadsheet for 26, Montgomery College got in that position. Their county cut them and they're not eligible for, for new state funds. So that's important that the county, and the county knows this, they do understand. So that's important that the county, and the county knows this, they do understand that any reductions jeopardize increases in state funding. So as I mentioned, the county funding request helps, you know, fund the college's pay package, helps offset that minimal state funding increase that we're thrilled to have, but it is minimal, and helps us with tuition affordability to not have to raise tuition and fees anymore than we already are. So the last piece, we've looked at county, we've looked at state, the last piece is what I'll call the college's contribution to the budget. This shows the, our tuition and fee revenue along, it's got a lot of information on it, along with the tuition rate increase, as I mentioned, a $5 tuition rate increase, and the credit FTE, which primarily drives the, the calculation, but there are some other components. The board budget committee has had two conversations with the county. I know Andrew and I have had several, but they've shared that they expect the college to, quote, "do its share" on the tuition rate increase in order to help them justify giving the college an increase on the county side. I don't know if any budget committee members want to add to that, but I, I will leave it there. So, we do have that $5 increase in the tuition rate, in-county tuition rate. Our proposed budget includes a flat projection for credit FTE over what we're seeing this current year. So flat projection over what we're seeing this current year, but an increase over the fiscal '25 budget. So, that's driving that $2.7 million that you see in the last column. That's the dollar change. So that's evidence of us, quote unquote, "doing our part," whether it's through enrollment increases that we feel like we're generating, and the tuition rate increase. We're bringing $2.7 million into the budget from our share, if you will. Little more information, this is helpful, there's more information on page 23, a summary of our tuition and fee rates since fiscal 2021. I think of note are the moderate increases at the bottom, really no more than 3%, consistent with the board's guiding principle of moderate tuition and fee increases. We've heard that from students many times, that they prefer annual increases versus going without a couple of years, and then doing a bigger increase in a particular year. Appropriately, it's, it's certainly more equitable. The last line shows the total estimated tuition and fees for a student taking 30 credit hours in a year. Still, we think a bargain versus a four-year college. College Park, for example, is $11,809 tuition and mandatory fees. So this is an increase for a student of $150 in fiscal '26, if they're taking, if they're a full-time student.
Madam Chair, if I may, Melissa, could you remind us of, of how much $1 increase in tuition relates to in terms of total revenue?
Yes, that's a great point. So when we raise tuition $1, $211,000, Sue, in our, oh, Andrew, $233,000 it brings into our budget. So the point being, when we raise tuition and the county says, "do your part," it doesn't bring, because we, we're affordable, right? We're at 100 and, you know, just take the, the in-county rate, $130, it doesn't bring a boatload of money into our budget. Certainly, students are paying it, right? And we've absolutely made that point with the county budget officer. You know, $5 certainly impacts our student, but it doesn't impact our budget tremendously. So to your point, $5 brings in roughly $1 million.
Yeah, I was, I was part of that discussion with Chris Trumbauer, and I, I know that he maybe capitulated a little bit from his earlier meeting with you all. It was really strong with you and not so strong with the, the board presentation. But the, the point is, is that they, they don't understand the impact that has on our budget down the line, meaning students will take less hours. We will, we will have, it's, it's not, it's not in a vacuum, it has elasticity in terms of pricing, and, and we try to remind them because they don't, they don't, they're just fur, further away from it. But we have to be sensitive to some degree because they're under a lot of pressure, and so, so are our state general assembly, the House of Delegates and Senate are in the same boat. But the point is, we have an obligation to our student body to stay affordable, to allow for these opportunities, and, and so we have to fight the good fight every day. The other thing I wanted to ask, Madam Chair, of you, is during the legislative follow-up meetings with MAC, is there some concern that they're going to change that Cade funding formally to something less than 29% down to 26? I mean, they never, they've only had one year that they've, or two years that they've met it, so it doesn't really matter. But are they going to formally introduce legislation to reduce that to 26%?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I do know that because, the last minute, we got involved in our statewide affinity group as business officers, there was a study by Department of Legislative Services to look at innovative ideas for how states are funding community colleges nationally. So there, it's certainly something that's being debated at the legislature. They don't like, Department of Budget and Management, DBM, at the state, they don't like formulaic funding because legislatively, they're bound by it, and they have to bring in that Burfa legislation to adjust it. So they would rather have, DBM, would rather have discretion. Cade binds them a little bit more, it's a little bit more challenging to, to adjust. There are conversations as a result of that request for a study, I think it was a joint chairman's report that requested that DLS study to look at Cade. No recommendations came for that, it was a study of, here's what this state does, here's what this state does. So it was more research-based. I would not be surprised if that's something, I've not heard anything this year about that, but I would not be surprised if it's something down the road that, that the state looks at.
Yeah, we heard during the workshop, one of the presentations that was made on a national basis is, look for alternatives for funding outside of Cade. And, and that got my colleague here a little concerned, that what was that all about? So I talked to, to the head of MAC, our, our executive director, and Brad said, "Well, there's always discussions about that, but we're really not focusing on anything other than Cade as, as MAC's legislative agenda." So it's, it's sort of kicking the can, but I, I hate to give them the opportunity because then they'll say, "Well, it's only 26%, we'll fund it at 24," you know? Because that's, that, that's the end result I, I see on the horizon, so, but thanks very much.
So, Larry, good point about the tuition. This board absolutely wants to do the best by the students, and we do understand that the $5, we don't, we don't like to see that number. So I'm going to ask, we really need to do this, however, for the benefit of the county, whether it's optics, whether it's reality in terms of their budget. Can you give us a feel, Melissa, for really how important it is to the county? And also, is it something that can be, still be negotiated, or is this board looking at $5 as probably the fixed number?
Yeah, it's, it's a really great point. I do want to pick up on the use of the word negotiated because you are the board, you set and approve the tuition rates for this college. The county gave us their position, gave us their insight into what they think. And we did hear this last year, if, if board members remember, when Andrew Dawn and I were in the, in Stuart Pittman's office and presenting the budget, there was a conversation about what, what number, where are you in relation to your peers? What do you charge for, what does Montgomery charge, what does CCBC? And the comment was, "You have room. You have room to increase tuition because you're," now, these are my words, but, you know, folks are getting Nordstrom education at Walmart prices, if you will. That's what they think. So that has been their mantra, that was last year, and we basically said, they wanted to see us increase more this year, and we said, "It's too late." I mean, we're, we've already got, you know, fall registration tables programmed in, and they said, "Well, we want to see it next year." Now, you're the board, so you can do what you wish. We've built a budget around $5, and that's what we are proposing. If you want to make changes, now is the time, because we would update that for your, for your approval on the 25th. We, well, I, funny trustees that heard from the county, $5 was what they felt like was the minimum. They probably would have liked to have seen more. When you look at our peers and feel like, "Well, you have, you have," and I've heard that from county council members previously, so it's something that is absolutely on their mind. If we do, and, and the reality is, again, my opinion, we've asked for several million-dollar increase from the county, I don't know that we're going to get it. I also don't know that state funding is going to stay where it is, based on all the challenges that the state has, and who knows what trickles down from the federal level. So, it's, it's something that's in your purview, our recommendation, and through the board budget committee, is to stay at the $5 level. We, it's not unusual. We have had, I was looking for it, we, we have done, we did $4 in 2024.
$4 is the highest we've had in recent years, this?
24 and 21, we did 4. So, 5, you know, feels different than 4, certainly, but percentage-wise, it's, it's the same as when we've done 4. Yeah.
I'm going, I'm going to reiterate what trustee Yuvala said, and with thanks to our budget committee, trustee Yuvala and trustee Pastroni, and ex-officio trustee Chen, I failed to thank them earlier, but I want to say, when we had that meeting with Chris Trumbauer from the county, the message was pretty clear. The, the message was strong. And as a, as a trustee, I would love to go without tuition increases. That would be my vote. But we can't do that. And the message from the county was pretty strong, that we all need to play nice in the sandbox, and this is what they're expecting. That was my message that I got. And I think Larry said the same thing, and I think, pardon me, trustee Yuvala said the same thing, and I agree with him. $5 an hour is going to amount to a little over $1 million, but it's, that's relatively small, but I also think the, it shows intent, that we are willing to work with the county. And I think, so I think that will be important. I, I always like Vice President Beardmore's comment about, "We're one good car battery away from losing a student." And, and that's absolute, I love that analogy, it's absolutely true, but I think stuck is probably not a professional term, but stuck might be where we are with this. So just a comment, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Moore. I really just wanted the discussion to go a little bit further, and this is wonderful. Thank you for your comments. So, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
I also think you characterized it correctly on optics. It's how it looks, you know, we, we need to be able to point to this in future years as well, that we, we're heard, Jen, we're doing what we can, but I, I'd love the student body to know that this is something that we take so seriously, that, that one of the main things that we want to do as a board is maintain affordability. And that'll always, I think, be on our, number one on our agenda. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, to add to this, I know you want to move on, but, yes, that's exactly what I was going to say. Go.
Wow. So this is a, an index, goodness, we built this years ago, that shows for four years how the college's tuition and fees for a full-time student compares to the median household income in each county. So generally, our percentage has remained the same. It's another measure we check in on in terms of affordability, in addition to everything we've just looked at and talked about. And so, you know, about 4% over the years in terms of our, our total tuition and fees versus median household income, and we still compare well to our peer colleges in Howard. No question there? Okay.
Do we collect information, just to go back a slide, are the, cost of living, are the household income, do we collect information on the median household income of our students? Maybe no, I was just curious, the county?
No, it's a great, it's a great question. I don't think we get that in our...
And it might be hard to access?
Yeah, only, probably we get it through students who apply for federal financial aid.
Okay.
But I don't know that we capture that, yeah.
Because I think what we acknowledge in our county is an income disparity.
100%.
Having work, I work directly with students who this impacts, and I want to say thank you to the college for keeping it affordable, because I've worked in, in my, my professional role, worked day and day out with students, young adults, who can't afford other options and do come here and have a great experience. And then I wonder what their actual median income in their households is compared to our county.
And, you know, it's, it was in my mind when we were having the previous conversation, so since you brought it up, I'll just remind us that this is why we have the student services that we have, that hopefully those students who are financially challenged, whether it's a car battery or it's all of their tuition, have mechanisms that, to get to us so we can help them. Because as I mentioned, you know, what the foundation provides, those $2 million in scholarships is huge, federal financial aid. We have so many aid programs where for students who are at that lower, you know, household income or on their own trying to afford it, we have so many resources. It's just getting them to the office, and our faculty help, you know, they have their ears on the, boots on the ground, ears wide open to hear of students and refer them to financial aid, because if they get in that door, we can help them. Fair?
Well, I think back to the, the possibility of losing federal funding, it's really important to keep that cost low for our students, too, as we, and how to do that is going, could be tricky. But it's also a testament to the college with priority in faculty, because relationships keep people coming back, and like you said, you are the people business, and so lowering the cost of expenses on materials and things for students matters. I was first generation, and that book fee was the hardest thing I had to swallow every single year, because that came right out of my pocket, or on a credit card, and then I had to pay interest on that, right? To, you know, was it Rob Peter to Pay Paul type thing?
Yep, yep.
And so just hats off to the work that you're doing, and I was just curious about that, because I know it's probably lower for many of our students who come here, median household.
Felicia's over here scanning her documents to see if she has that, so we'll see if she, we'll see if she comes through.
Thank you, and you may not, you may not. I just realized that's a county number, not, you know, our actual student body.
Of course, yes, excellent point. Excellent point. Rounding out our revenues are the transfers to and from, as we've talked about, the Tuition Stabilization Fund, our auxiliary services, our enterprise transfer from those accounts, and then other income, which is decent, and that's, other income is interest on our, on our cash accounts. So those are kind of the other resources and categories that the college brings to the budget. So on the Tuition Stabilization Fund, we've talked about this, this is similar to a rainy day fund at the government level, fund balance, if you will, it is, can be a one-time funding source for the budget. The balance fluctuates based on how we end the year, so we may add to it if we have a surplus, or we may spend into it. We always, as long as I've been here, we have a budgeted transfer from that fund, however, we don't always make that transfer. I can think of maybe one year when we actually have made that transfer. But on this slide, you know, the board policy, I think it's in your, yes, it's in your mater, oh, page 32, the board policy of maintaining between 5 and 10% of total budget there, and we did, years ago, develop, and it's a copy of it in your documents, an MOU with the county. I don't want to get into it because it'll trigger me, but they did take $10 million from our fund balance in fiscal '11, so that generated the need to at least have an MOU. It's not legally binding, but it does show a, meeting of the minds in terms of the college's goal of maintaining a Tuition Stabilization Fund. Oops, I'm sorry, I didn't advance. So, this is in relation, we also have a budget-guiding... So this is in relation, we also have a budget guiding principle related to the Tuition Stabilization Fund, maintaining it, but also having responsible usage, as other trustees have brought up in the past. It's a balancing act. You know, too high, it can be a target for the county, you have too much money. Or too low, it's not fiscally responsible. So currently projected with this budget, we are within the board's goal of being between 5 and 10%. You see here, we're at 7.3%. And as we've talked about, with the uncertainty at the federal level, I'd be very comfortable if the amount were even higher. But I think this is an appropriate level where, where we are. This is a slide, trustee Keller, to your very initial conversation about funding sources. This is a slide, a chart that shows how the three funding sources, state, county, and college are in relation to our total budget. So as a guideline, if you think we have three funding sources, so equitably, it should be a third, a third, a third, right? 33% each. This shows you how we, how we stack up. The state, still below that 33% goal at 30%, so not where they need to be, not surprising. County is at 38%. So you know, they're, they're, they don't always, they verily fund us at the level we request. But overall, they are a good funding partner to us, contributing 38% of our budget. And the college close at 32%. Again, getting closer to our target as more evidence of us doing our part, if you will. This is, woo, this is a very busy chart, but it shows a summary of all the stuff we talked about, all the components in our budget in a summary format. And most importantly, showing a balanced budget as evidenced by the zero at the bottom of the blue column. So when you approve the budget in public session on the 25th, you'll see a report like this as, as the exhibit. So it's the amalgamation of everything we've talked about into one shiny little, little document. We talked about this a little bit, trustee Chen, your question on OPEB. But we do provide an update, and there's more information in your book, on other post-employment benefits. Again, that relates to health insurance, prescription, dental and vision for retirees. And as I mentioned, those fund accounting rules required us to book the future liability and the expense for each year based on how much the liability changes. And before that fund accounting rule, we were only booking what we paid in the current year. So we were ignoring, and we're allowed to, those future costs. So pre-funding the liability helps to reduce the college's expense. And I mentioned to the chair earlier, you know, compared to our peers, other colleges and governments, we're in very good shape because we're actually funding that projected liability. We are in, whoops, I went the wrong way. We are, as this slide shows, we're in a trust, good partnership with the county, the library, and now K-312 is part of our little club. We're in a revocable trust where by creating that trust, we're able to send money to fund that liability. It's invested and it generates returns. We have contributed a little under $10 million, as you see there. The county has contributed more than $10 million. And they're currently funding that for us. We're not kicking any money in right now. So we've, and, and as a bonus, the assets, like any investments, have exceeded the cash contributed. So the assets have done well based on our investments. Andrew and I sit on that board, if you will, with other members from the library, county, et cetera, to, to guide how that, those planned assets are being invested. Okay, we're almost done with operating budget. So we are required to submit a budget for all funds, that's in state law. This summarizes the activities of the non-operating funds in our auxiliary and enterprise funds. A lot more information in your budget book. Basically, those auxiliary enterprise funds are managed with a goal of being self-supporting, to be classified here. Generally, there's no county or state funds here. These entities charge a fee basically for what they provide. So auxiliary, that's primarily bookstore, events and conferences, dining services. I think it's page 29 where there's a little bit more information. Enterprise is continuing education, also physical therapy and workforce development, that's on page 30. And restricted funds, as we talked about, that's primarily financial aid. So that's where that federal financial aid is. And you do see a huge increase. They are budgeted for '26. That's actually, well, that's a good thing. That means that more of our students are accessing federal financial aid. That's good for our students. And the county council, remember, we talked about them being the appropriation authority. They approve this in total. So they give us approval in the auxiliary enterprise and restricted funds. In the county's budget, it's one line in the county's budget and allows us to spend $42,342,300. If we're going to spend a dollar more, we have to go to them and get approval. But it's in total that they appropriate this amount. And this will be a schedule in your, in the budget you approve on the exhibit, that you approve on the 25th. That's the operating budget. Then we have capital, then we have master plan. Keep going, all right? I could use a little bio break.
Yes, we'll take a brief.
And we will take a break when we transition to the facilities master plan to get set up too.
Okay, well, we'll take a brief break now.
Great.
Okay.
That would be lovely.
Back from our commercial break. So we're going to spend, want to be mindful of time. We still have to get through this and the capital budget. So Andrew will go quickly through this, but tons more information in your materials beyond what Andrew is going to hit the highlights on right now.
Yes. So I'm just going to give the official disclaimer on all of this. This is a planning tool. It's not a budget request. It's something we use in the development process to make sure as we consider opportunities and challenges we're seeing in the current year, if we make those decisions, what's it going to look like in five years? We don't want to make a decision today that we're backpedaling on next year or the year after that because, oh, it's not fiscally sustainable. And so what this tool does is allow us to take the decisions we're making in this budget cycle, map them out with some pretty significant assumptions to see if we see challenges and what that looks like. And I'll just spoil the headline. I don't see anything in this budget that makes me think, no way, don't do this. So that's it. It's very important that you remember that this is not a budget request. What you will see in future budget cycles will not be these numbers. They will be different. And I will say, though, they look pretty similar to ones we've seen in the past. So we are able to balance this in each year for, as long as I can remember, we see some of these challenges in there. So you might see some negative numbers in there that I'll start to talk about and why that may not be as bad as it looks, but it is part of the process. And so what this does for us, as you look at what we're projecting here in these baseline projections, is we do some basic planning and assumptions around what we're seeing for state revenue and county revenue. So we're looking at that, what's a 3% increase in county or state revenue? What's a 3% increase in county revenue? What if tuition and fees, we do small incremental tuition rate increases, but enrollment holds flat? What does that look like from a revenue perspective? And then you see down there in that one line, other income. That's where we were talking about our investment income earlier. We expect to start spending that down. We expect to see interest rates start to pull back a little bit. And so we factored in reasonably what we expect to see there. And you see that's starting to go from 1.5 million down to $762,000 by the time we get to fiscal year 2031. The big one here is in that tuition stabilization fund, that $2 million. Remember, we're at 3-plus million dollars in this current budget in the tuition stabilization fund, and that's our savings account. So think about that. We've talked before. You don't want to pay your mortgage with your savings account because once you've paid it, you don't have those savings anymore, and you can't keep paying your mortgage out of savings. And so we pay attention to that because at $3 million, we have to really pay attention to it. $2 million on the size of our budget, less than 2% of our total operating budget, you generally think we can manage to about $2 million a year. So what this projection is, is we've pulled it back down to that. And I'll speak to sort of what that means here in a second, but that, so we've dialed that back in the future assumptions. And then the auxiliary enterprise transfer is another pretty big change. So in the '25 budget and what we're proposing for '26, we have a million-dollar transfer from the auxiliary funds. We think based on current operations and what they're doing, that's a reasonable number. But if things change and change quickly, we're back down to 250,000, which is what we had used for probably the last decade, I think, in that line. And what we realized is we're not really leveraging that fund to fund operations. What it was doing was they'd make a million, and it would fall to fund balance, and then the fund balance would grow, tuition stabilization fund would grow, and we'd have to figure out a way to appropriate that back into operations, which is a challenge because now you're thinking, oh, that's my savings. I shouldn't be spending that every year, when in reality, they are able to make that revenue each year, and we should just factor it into our planning purposes. So that's up there just in case revenue starts to fall back from those models. So if our contract training falls significantly, bookstore operations evolve and go in a different direction, affordability efforts sort of challenge that revenue model, we've dialed that back. And so what that does is that gives us a total operating revenue piece. And then when we start to look at expenditures, we did some very base on assumptions. We don't expect to see significant new initiatives coming forward in future budgets. We've been very good at doing reallocations to fund our priorities. And so we mentioned this year with the dental hygiene program, this year and in 2026 are some of the first in about five years that we've put new funding toward initiatives. And so we think we'll be able to balance with those reallocations, reinforcing the work that we're doing under the academic portfolio and resources review, as well as the administrative services review that we did a few years ago, too. So we have to keep finding opportunities to redistribute time, effort, energy, dollars towards those new initiatives. And so we haven't planned for any new initiatives in this cycle or in this five-year projection. We also, in that process, we did some general projections for what we think compensation is going to look like, somewhere in that 3% inflationary piece. What we know is the current environment is not supporting that. We are seeing higher wage increases than 3%, and so that's something we're very much paying attention to. But think about this in a snapshot over a five-year period. On average, would we expect to see tuition, or sorry, salary rates increasing 3% over that period? That's more reasonable than saying next year it's going to be 3%. Next year it could be 6 again, the year after that could be 2. So we're just sort of saying, on average, does that seem reasonable? And it does, although it is one that we're very much paying attention to, given the current market. So what that does is when you look at our total expenditure line, well, the details are in the book on what that actually, how we get to those numbers. It basically says, at the operating level with no new initiatives, we're short $2.3 million, and that looks like a problem. That is 100% driven by the fact that we are reducing the tuition stabilization fund contribution by $1 million. It's also the other piece to that is we've reduced the auxiliary enterprise contribution by about $750,000. And the other piece is that investment income piece. So all of that, oh, we're not going to be able to sustain operations, is driven by those three assumptions changing. And I do not think that those assumptions are going to change next year. Will they change by the end? Probably, right? We'll start to peel that back a little bit. But we're in really good shape, I think, until you get to that 2031 line from a general operations perspective. Now we get into the tougher things. These are things that we know, sort of, I'll call some of them the kick the can items, right? And so the Time to Care Act, that's something that we know is coming. This is where you're going to contribute to a fund to make sure that employees, all employees have access to leave.
And it's state law.
And it's state law, so it's a requirement. It's kind of like social security taxes. It's going to be a percentage of payroll that's going to go in there. We know that's going to be coming in. Our current estimates are somewhere in the 425, 450 range for that. So we've got it in here to plan for. We've got to find a solution for what that looks like. We're also in the middle of still figuring out what this means for a consortium so that we can save on those costs. But generally, see, we bake that in here. So that's one that we don't have a solution for yet. It's $425,000 on a several hundred million dollar budget. We'll figure that one out. The next line is the IT capital budget initiatives. You remember in the conversation about the tuition stabilization fund, we've moved money into our capital budget. And that budget is allowing us to make significant investments in things like our SaaS conversion for our ERP system. So we're moving to the cloud, more efficient operating model, less maintenance in that process. But during that time, there's duplication of cost. There's effort to stand that up. And so we're using those funds to do that. By the time we get to 2030, the IT capital budget will have done its job. It will have done all those things. And we have to figure out, one, where are the savings that we generated from all those initiatives? How do we start to fund those activities? So that's sitting at about $1.7 million that we know is coming, and we've got to start to peel those things off. So just as an example, we have two systems doing something right now that we're moving to the cloud-based version of that's going to eliminate those. We got to pull those off the budget. And so that's going to generate the savings to be able to support that. So we have that sitting out there. That's something that we will continue to pay attention to because it will start getting closer, and we'll continue to monitor that. And then the last one is that essential technology maintenance line, that million dollars. That's a rough ballpark estimate of what we need to fund PC replacements and AV equipment. So computer labs activity, faculty-staff computers, things sitting in the sky right now that are projecting this. We know we have a replacement cycle. For as long as I've been doing budgeting, we have not had an actual budget for that. What we do is we try and generate savings during the current year to make sure that we do those critical replacements. And we've been able to sustain that and do that. I don't know if we'll be able to do that forever, but we're pretty good at doing it right now. So we're paying attention to that and watching that, but I think we'll be able to keep pushing that out. Rick and his team have done a really good job of trying to identify opportunities to reduce that footprint, so that million dollars likely might come down to $650,000. And so as we keep doing that work, that becomes more and more manageable. And that's why at the very bottom, the number looks so big. I don't, we're not really there, so I think we have good plans to be able to maintain and sustain this. We just have to pay attention to those key assumptions. So if, for instance, we get into a situation where we don't achieve our tuition and fee revenues, enrollment starts to decline, the state revenues are cut, the county revenues are cut, that's when it becomes a lot more problematic. And so what we've done is we've run a couple of other scenarios. So that's the first sort of baseline. If we wave our magic wand and things are what we think they're going to be, do we look like we have trouble? We think we can manage it. Not anything of significance there. So let's run a couple of best-case, worst-case, really, really worst-case scenarios. And so with this, we look at things like, if things continue the way that we've projected, what do we see as challenges? We just sort of talk through that, right? We don't, we don't really, we don't have a solution for the changes in our revenues on auxiliary enterprise, the tuition stabilization fund that we're going to pull pieces out of. So that's challenged. What if things are better? State actually gives us 6% increases. The county gives us 6% increases. What does that look like? And then we've got another one, like, what if things are the same? And so in all of those scenarios, none of them work well, right? Like, we have very, doesn't look like by the time we get to 2031, we have problems, except for the one that if funding comes in better from the state, the county, and tuition revenue continues to grow. And so what that means is it's just reinforcing all the stuff that we just talked about. We have to keep doing that work to analyze our operations on the academic portfolio and resources review. We have to do administrative services review stuff to start to save cost in our operating budget. But nothing is looking like it's impossible to do, based on what we're putting into the budget today. So the big sort of headline on all of this is, it looks scary. We're paying attention to it. We think we've got it under control now, but we have to keep looking at this. And this is one of the first things we talked to the budget committee about when we were looking at things, at starting the budget process. We've rolled everything forward, looked at where 2025 was, what we were projecting to start 2026. And so it is something that we discussed with the committee several times throughout the process. It's a very living document as we go through and do this. And it allows us to get in front of this so that we're not reactive for something that we should know is coming in three to five years. And so we'll continue to do that work. It will evolve. We will get surprised by something, but we think we have contingency plans to be able to deal with all of that. And this is just really that exercise in reminding ourselves that not everything is perfect, and we have to be conscious of the fact that, like, maybe 6% compensation pools are not sustainable. And we will have to figure out a way to get back to something more in line with general inflation. So I think that's it for the multi-year planning tool, unless there's any specific questions.
Thank you, Andrew. We're going to slide into the capital budget. So as a reminder, we just went through the operating budget. That's what it takes to operate the college on an annual basis. The capital budget is the budget for which we spend funds, primarily from the county and the state, to maintain our facilities. So this slide shows a summary, and this will be the last example of what you will see when you approve the budget on the 25th. You'll approve the operating budget, and then you'll approve the capital budget. This will be the exhibit for the capital budget. It is an eye test, but it is also in your background materials. This summarizes what we will submit to the county. And it's a capital budget. It's multi-year, and we're required to submit a current year request, so fiscal '26, plus five out-years, because those projects take three to five years to complete. So it shows a total picture. And we'll be presenting this to the county again tomorrow. All right. So we're going to, actually, let me go back. I just want to note, you see there in the top section, there in blue, new construction projects. There are none. And we'll come back to that in a second. And you'll hear more, actually, this works out nicely when we talk about our facilities master plan in about a half an hour. So the next section, no new projects, but renovations. The Dragon Science Building, oops, sorry, Andrew. Yes, thank you. I've got multiple things happening here. The Dragon Science Building renovation, that's a comprehensive renovation of the existing building. It's kind of circa 1980s right now. So as a reminder, this project's scope would, has changed. For our newer board members, originally, this project was going to be a renovation to the existing building and an addition. Okay. Cost estimates came in that were almost double what the, we had budgeted what the county was expecting. Did increase a little bit, but we had to go, the county told us, oh, goodness gracious, no. We can't afford a project that's double what was initially approved. So we had to remove the addition. So this project is now just a renovation of the existing building. Of note, and this is going to be something we talk quite a bit about when we talk about the master plan in a few minutes, the addition was where the math faculty were going to be. They were going to relocate. So this, the fact that we've lost the addition means that the math faculty are staying in their current space. And we're going to look at some options in the master plan that, for math faculty. And we have made some adjustments, Jim Taylor and his team. We've invested some year-end funds. Where are we in? This year? Last year? I don't know. Recently. We've updated that building as best we can. So the student spaces have been refreshed. We've bought new furniture. We've painted. The challenge is the space is undersized. So math faculty are in space, the math faculty in that building are in space that's just undersized for them. And we know that, and it's unfortunate. So we are going to spend quite a bit of time talking with you, with our consultants, about what the future for math folks looks like. And we have, I think we have three options that we're going to talk about. But I don't want to give too much away. So that's this project. Design is coming along nicely, and we should be completing the design process later this year. Jim will correct me if I'm wrong. And we are working on the logistical plans. This is a big-ish building, so how we relocate faculty, staff, student labs, and classrooms out of this building. And construction is expected to start in 2026. We're very excited that the county funded this building. This was, after we built the Health and Life Sciences Building, Dragon was the next big project in our facilities master plan. So it's wonderful that it's still funded.
I have a question about the Dragon building renovation. For the monies that we will be getting from the county, is one of the things we all need to know who have seen that building is when we go back into that renovated building, is this going to cover the new equipment?
Oh, gosh, yes.
Okay, this will, because the equipment is going to be a significant portion of this. Thank you.
Yes. It will be an interior renovation, and we take an approach where Jim and his team don't sit in a room and redesign the space. So it's an inclusive process. So we have the faculty and deans and assistant deans who supervise that area involved in the redesign process, number one. Number two, there's a lot of equipment. So that's part of, it's the redesign of the space, the updating internally in some systems, but also FFNE. That's, I should have called that out. When you see FFNE, that stands for furnitures, fixture, and equipment. That's part of the budget. We design it, we construct it, and we equip it with furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Great question. Yes. It's a very tired building. The Floristano Building, we talked about, as we're sitting in here, it's just to my left. We've renovated the fourth floor of the building, opened in spring of 2024. That contains the college's new snazzy learning innovation center, which you've been in. And we are now in the process of designing the renovation of the first through third floors. That's going to be the new Student Services Center. And design is well underway, and we will finish the design any day now, yes, and begin the renovation work July this year. Okay. So that building is well underway as well, which brings me to the Student Services Center, if you're tracking. So folks, when we open Floristano, folks who are currently in the Student Services Center, records, registration, advising, the cashier's office, they move to the Floristano Building. So now Student Services is vacant. So this project renovates that space, and you're going to hear more about this when we talk about the facilities master plan as well. Current thinking is it'll be a student engagement, lively, fun space. It will be event space for students. Could, this all could change, but this is the current thing. Student life, student government offices, maybe a game room. And anyway, so that's this project. This one, sadly, the county has pushed out, but it is funded by the county, which is wonderful. Doesn't, the building is going to sit vacant unless something changes for a few years before there's funding available to conduct that renovation. We've talked about HCAT, hospitality, culinary arts, and tourism is what that stands for. We are, our HCAT facility, we have two different locations for the HCAT program. One is in Glen Burnie, and one is here in the Humanities Building in Arnold. One in Glen Burnie, one in Arnold. The building in Glen Burnie is owned by the county. It's sinking, very technical term, has severe settlement issues. And the county knows that. We don't own the building, again, so we've made repairs when we can, but the settlement issues are of concern. It is not an emergency, but we need a long-term solution. The county conducted an engineering study in February two years ago. Yes. And they looked at some options. We talked with them, and we convinced them, rather than spend money, it could have been $6 million to repair, and maybe it doesn't fix it. Why don't we spend, we, why don't we spend the money and relocate HCAT to Arnold? So that H, that's what this project does, moves HCAT and takes the folks who, HCAT folks who are in the Humanities Building, puts them all together. They have a savory program, they have a sweet program, puts them all together, in addition to our Clausen Center for Innovation and Sculpting. And that's always been the plan for Clausen. That's the building that was funded through our wonderful foundation, through donors. It was always the ability to build an addition. Well, here we are. The county has agreed that that makes sense. So eventually, per the schedule listed here, we would move those folks out of Glen Burnie into the addition, move the folks out of Glen Burnie. We'll pay half, and the state should pay half for it. So this is one that's funded. Which will then be our current facilities master plan that you're going to hear more on anyway. But we do want to submit it again in our capital budget just to get it on the county's radar screen, which leaves some of the fun, exciting, kind of deferred maintenance type projects, and there are several. Our campus improvements projects, that covers unexpected emergencies. Using fund balance, we transferred money into here to fix that bridge behind me. So we have deferred maintenance. We do a comprehensive facilities condition audit. You'll hear more about that in about, in about half an hour. And we do have a backlog of deferred maintenance. Jim Taylor and his team are very good at prioritizing what things, HVAC units, boilers, fund things like that, that we need to fix. And usually, if we don't have an emergency, we use these funds left over at the end of the year to pick off some of those deferred maintenance projects. Similarly, oh, I thought I hit that. We have a walkways, I'll just call it walkways project, parking lots, but this allows us to replace asphalt walkways, repair and repave portions of parking areas, address ADA issues across the campus. This project recently refunded a renovation. The board approved the contract to renovate the outdoor space between the library, Student Union Building, and the Ludlum Building, which looks fantastic, by the way. We did escalate this a little bit, about $9,000. We didn't get it, we asked for it last year. It's usually 250. We're asking for 259 for some inflation increases, but I don't know if the county will fund that. It's usually 250. We're asking for 259 for some inflation increases, but I don't know if the county will fund that. Systemics, this is a project, this is similar projects, the bigger deferred maintenance projects. So when we are going to replace a roof on a building, and it might cost, you know, millions of dollars. These are the bigger projects here. Air handlers, things like that. We're requesting funds in '26. We had to request it, we requested it last year. The county didn't fund it to replace the Careers Building roof. That's a picture actually of damage, because that roof is leaking. That happened a couple months ago. The existing roof is failing, and we have leaks, so we're going to be asking for funds as listed here, that $2.5 million from the county. What is not happening here? There we go. Andrew will correct me if I'm wrong. I'll just keep moving here. Information technology enhancement, we're not requesting new funding. We do update the county. We will be updating them tomorrow on this project. This is modernizing our IT systems and enhancing security. So we're not requesting new funds, but that work continues with prior year funds. Yes, sorry, Andrew. So this is a project, fiber. So that's the stuff under the ground, technical term, Rick. This is a continued request. The county has funded it, but they only fund it in the current year. They won't commit to the out-year funding. That's fine. So this replaces and improves the fiber infrastructure that's been in place since 1996. Holy Hannah. So, and you approve, these contracts are at the level that they come to the board. The Facilities Committee reviews them, and they come to the board for approval. So you'll see more about that in the future. And here we go, second to last slide. So again, summarizing our total capital request to the county. Very consistent with the guidance we got months ago from the county budget officer, saying, continue to take care of what you have. This went out to all county departments, us, probably not the Board of Ed. But they, they wanted us to not have any big, huge new projects for funding, but also because the county executive and that administration is going to change. And they didn't, I thought it was very kind of them. They didn't want to commit future administrations to big new projects in the out-years until that administration comes in and can look at those projects. So we're in a really good position because we've got their commitment for Dragon, Floristano, Student Services, and HCAT. That's already programmed in. So that's wonderful for us. And this is what the capital budget looks like, and I will take any questions you may have, because we're done. Well, the budget part. Then we roll into the, the fund facilities master plan update.
Monica, are we scheduled for a break?
Yes, it would be great if we could take a break now, because the next, our presenters are logging into Zoom right now, and we need to do some audio tests to make sure that you can hear them and they can hear us.
Okay, so how long should we break for?
10.
10.
Let's go for
15.
15 minutes, if that's okay.
Whoa, 15. Party. Thank you, Monica.
And there's still food over there, so.
Okay, let's break for 15.
We're ready to reconvene. I'd like to remind the trustees, please, since we are on Zoom, that when you speak, please make sure your mic is on. Otherwise, our consultants will not hear you. And so now I'll pass the meeting on to President Lindsay.
Thank you. Well, now we're getting started on the fun part of the morning is the playing around. And now we're going to be moving toys and buildings and things. So I know it's fun for you guys, but it's not usually.
Lego.
Yeah. But anyway, Larry, as the person who's representing the facilities master plan, will be facilitating this dialogue. And I really want to say thanks again, Jean. We met with you yesterday. We're still talking about how much fun it was. So we've got an anxious.
I didn't see Sarah.
She's slid up in the top.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Sarah. Hi.
Hello.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Larry. This really is going to be a fun portion of the day. And it's very, I don't know, can't wait to make it happen.
Thank you, Dawn. Inviting me to make a few comments is a dangerous thing. So I'll try to be very brief. I can't talk as fast as Andrew, but I'll be as brief as I possibly can. As a board representative, I just wanted to make a few comments for my colleagues on the board. You cannot believe the depth of analysis that's been going on for this 10-year master plan. Analyzing the capacity of this campus throughout is unbelievable. It gets my head spinning, and I've even commented that way, that looking at utilization of each classroom, every square foot of this institution, to be sure that we right-size it going forward is something that our consultant, our JMZ consultant and our staff have put so many hours in to try to make sure that there's no stone unturned. So just keep in mind that this is something that when we bring the plan to you, that before it goes to MHEC, you'll have the confidence that a real meal has been made out of it. It's just, it's so impressive. And I've enjoyed it. I do have to criticize Melissa by saying she told me it wasn't going to be a heavy lift in a lot of meetings.
Yes.
And that hasn't, that hasn't been the case. But in any event, it's been a real worthwhile cause for us. And I'm happy to represent our board throughout the process. And as you know, I do chair Facilities, so it's probably pretty appropriate that I be on the Steering Committee. And that's all I want to say. Melissa?
And we appreciate you, Larry, all your experience at your young age. All of your experience is so incredibly helpful.
How about my humor? How about my humor?
That too. I mean, so many gifts, too many to mention. But we were very happy that you were appointed as our board liaison for this project. And we appreciate bearing with us for all the meetings, but they are mostly virtual. And we're very pleased to give the board an update today. To Larry's point, this is a high-level update, and I'll introduce our fabulous consultants in just a minute. This is a high-level update. You will get an opportunity, and when it's printed, it's usually about that thick, to review the whole written document, probably several times, before we submit it and before you, actually, you're going to approve it in public session in January of 2026. So January 2026, you'll approve it in public session, but you'll have time to review the whole document with all the data and all the schedules. So we're going to give you an update today on where we are in the process. And I'm very pleased to introduce our fantabulous consultants, Jean Stark and Sarah Moser from JMC Architects. They are a women-owned business out of Glens Falls, New York. And just as a bit of background, and then we'll jump right into the fun part, we are required by the state to complete a comprehensive facilities master plan every 10 years. We completed a last one, the big one, in 2016. We did a little update in 2021 to update for enrollment projections and things like that and to align with how the county was funding our projects. And we, as I mentioned, expect to submit a new master plan after you approve it in early 2026. The state dictates what's in the master plan by topics. They also, in terms of categories that you have to cover in the plan, they also dictate what kind of data and benchmarks and require how we collect and report the data. You will see lots of data when you get the final report or the draft report. Just as background, as Larry mentioned, for a big project like this, we structure it with a steering committee. So Larry is our board liaison, the president, the VPs, Jim Taylor, our executive director of administrative services, who's our project manager. And we also have representatives from the constituency groups. If they're still here, yes, Darian St. Carter is one of those members, and he's back behind us. That group, the steering committee, has met four times this year. And we also have an operations team. So we have a steering committee and operations team. Operations team are folks, more boots-on-the-ground folks, who have functional responsibility for our facilities, but also IIT, Jim's team, of course, PRIA, our planning and research group, student services, members from learning. Did I say IIT? I think I did. And this structure allows for us, obviously, to manage the project well, I think, but also to infuse shared governance while including those with functional expertise. And the tagline that Jean will probably say, but that we've been sharing with folks throughout this process, while we strive to allow everyone to have their say, not everyone gets their way. So we get feedback from people, but at the end of the day, the facilities master plan, we will have to make some strategic decisions, and folks will have had an opportunity to weigh in. Along those lines, we are planning, we had two hours with the president's cabinet yesterday, and we will be having an open forum for the college community probably in April timeframe. So today, JMZ will provide an overview of the work we've completed to date, and we should have some, of course, as always, and Jean, you and Sarah, always very good. If you can, hopefully you can hear me. It looks like you can. If board members have questions, just like the last two hours, please, if you have questions, ask. In between JMZ folks, Jim and I, my colleagues, we should be able to answer. Fair? All right, let's see how this technology works. We have a presentation.
Great. Okay. It looks like, can everyone see that? And hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. We're really pleased to be.
Good morning.
We're really pleased to be with you here this morning. We hope to be in person, but I know you had some weather the other day, and today we have a lot of freezing rain, so it's probably good we're all in our respective seats. I'm Jean Stark. My colleague Sarah Moser, you can probably see her on the screen as well. And so, excuse me, we are really pleased to be working on this plan. I personally have been working, well, actually, Sarah's been working with me as well, but we worked on the 2016 master plan and the 2021 update. So this is kind of like coming home for us. And so we're, next slide, please. So we are working in conjunction, obviously, with the committees that Melissa mentioned. Also, the Board of Trustees is a big part of this. As Melissa mentioned, we look to you for guidance and approval of what we're doing and what we proposed. And so after our two-hour meeting with the president's cabinet yesterday, we have some questions for you. We're going to reveal what we discussed yesterday and some of the recommendations that were made, and want to get your opinion on those. So as Melissa said, please, let's kind of make this more of a dialogue as opposed to a monologue, so that we can really kind of get a feel for what you're looking for. JMZ is working with a cost estimator on this project, and we have started preliminary cost estimates, and we'll provide you with some of that information. Those cost estimates will be tweaked and fine-tuned towards the end of this project. And we also have access to an engineering firm that the college contracted with, and they have done, I'm sure you've probably heard about this, a full facilities condition assessment study. So we're working with them as well, as well as MHEC and the county. Next, please. So today, we're going to be talking briefly about the facility master plan process. I believe some of you have been involved in facilities master plans, and some of you have not. So we'll kind of give you that overview, so you know what we've been up to and where we're going. Then we'll do a quick summary of needs. As Melissa mentioned, you're going to be maybe not overwhelmed, but kind of have a lot of reading to do when you start seeing all the data we've been collecting. We've been working on this since September of 2004. So we have, and we know the college well, but of course, a lot has happened in the last five years, needless to say. So we reacquainted ourselves with the college and also have been doing a lot of additional number crunching. Then we're going to be looking at preliminary concepts, which is really, as Dawn said, is the fun stuff. So we really are looking forward to seeing your, getting your feedback on the things that we are all looking forward to, and that as a group, and in conjunction with many, many members of the college community we've come up with as projects. Then we're going to talk about the results of that workshop that we had yesterday, and finally, the next steps. And before I go any further, I really like to thank Dawn and Larry and Melissa for the wonderful comments you made about us. We have been enjoying this process very much, and we look forward to continuing with it. Next, please. Oops, went too far. Back, back, nope, nope, you're going forward. Back, there you go. Thank you. Okay, well, this is a five-step process. Some of these steps are currently a little bit whited out. This was supposed to be a PowerPoint presentation, but it's turned into a PDF presentation, so our animation's not working. But it is a five-step process that started in September 2024, as I mentioned, and will go through January 2026. Basically, in the beginning, we do, we learn to understand, work to understand the campus, as I mentioned. That's the work we started initially with data gathering. And then we look to evaluate all that data. One of some of the things that we have worked on, are working on, as Larry mentioned, a full space utilization analysis. We took a look at every single instructional space on campuses and also at Rundle Mills and at Glen Burnie and at HCAT, and took a look at how well those rooms are being utilized over the course of a given week and a given semester. That gave us a really clear view of where classrooms are being maybe overtaxed and where labs are being overtaxed, excuse me, where more space might be needed and where you have extra space. We also took a look at office space. And through several meetings with steering committee and things of that nature and interviews, we learned a lot more about space use. Then we, as we analyze all that data, excuse me, and try and filter it all together, taking a look at the facilities condition information we learned from the engineers, our own observations on campus, our utilization assessment, and the interviews, we start to pull that information together and really get an idea of where the college is, how you're using your space, how people feel about the space, where are you going? We were talking with the provost about the academic program review and what that might mean for the future, where we anticipate programs might grow, where they might shrink a little bit as best we can without a crystal ball. And now we're in what we call the envision phase, which is the really, really fun phase, which is where we start to look at those preliminary concepts that you'll see today, and working through them all with you. And hopefully, again, as we said, we'll be on campus in April and presenting them to the entire college community. Hopefully, we'll have a really big turnout, and then getting some feedback there. So that's what you'll hear about today. Then finally, we have what we call the achieve component, which really starts about in May or June of this year. We will be delivering the first draft of this report in May, the end of May. That's because we have all these, all these other groups that have to take a look at this, including the Board of Trustees. As Melissa mentioned, we need to have you look at it, get your approval, get your critique. Then we have MHEC and the Department of Budget, et cetera. Everyone has to look at this before we get to January, when we'll be delivering the final report to you. And then in February, it's due to the state. Next, please. So this is kind of a summary of where we are. We are in mid-February, and we're on track with all of our work. The only thing that's a little bit lagging is the first progress report. That will be coming out very soon. We have been working diligently with the college to fine-tune some of the space information to make sure everything is categorized correctly, so that we know exactly what kind of space you have and what kind of space you need in the future. Next, please. So our scope of services is pretty exhaustive. It's a comprehensive review. I'm not going to read the slides for you, but in addition to all the meetings we've had so far, the four meetings we had with the steering committee and those that we've had with the operations committee, we had an open forum workshop with students and a town hall meeting for faculty and staff when we were on campus. And we conducted 14 interviews with over 50 stakeholders to start to gain more information about how space is used and what the needs are now and in the future. We've done projections for headcount, which you'll see momentarily, for student credit hours, for weekly student contact hours, FTE, FTDE, and faculty and staff projections. All that information is required for my MHEC, and we have to include that in the facilities master plan. We have to provide them with a five-year history of where the college has been in all of those categories and project 10 years out into the future, which is always kind of a challenge, because no one really knows what's going to happen. But we feel very comfortable, and the college does as well, with what we've come up with so far. Again, I mentioned we review and integrating the facilities conditions report and the cost estimates and developing these multiple concepts. Next, please. So 10 years ago, we developed some guiding principles for the facilities master plan, and we've looked at those periodically, we've been working with you over those 10 years. And most of them haven't really changed too much. Some have kind of come to the forefront a little bit more, but at the core of this is financial, fiscal responsibilities, financial responsibilities, operational efficiencies, and what's important and beneficial for the campus and the community. Of course, we have hybrid learning that really took off with COVID, and that's going to continue. The college has decided that they're going to try and maintain the same level of online learning that currently exists on campus, because it's been very successful for many, many students. So I think that that does have an impact on the space that we need. The numbers for MHEC, the way they calculate space, hasn't really caught up yet with the reality of online instruction. So you'll see when we, the next time we go through this, when you take a look at the space projections, MHEC will say that we have probably a little bit too much classroom space, but we have ways of showing through our utilization analysis and what we're going to be proposing, that we are using the space well and that the college does need the space that it has and the different categories it has it in. So one of the most important things about any facilities master plan is it needs to be implementable. We want it to be visionary, yes. We want to look forward. We want to do some exciting things that will really support student enrollment and student success and engagement, and also make it a wonderful place for faculty, staff, and to work. However, we want to make sure also that it's practical and it's tied to the fiscal realities we know that are out there, as Melissa kind of alluded to, mentioned at the very beginning of this meeting, that we make sure that we're not designing a master plan that is so hogtied by any one major project in the front that you can't realize the rest of the project. It needs to be flexible, and that's what we aim for, to give you the opportunity as things change. Who knows what's going to happen in the next five, 10 years, that you can modify the plan and still stay on track. Next, please. Okay, so here we go. It's some, just one of the pieces of data, the headcount enrollment projections. I'm going to walk you through this, because it's a little bit, little difficult to ferret through at first blush. But it starts off, the orange line represents, on the left of the dotted dash line, kind of reality of what has happened so far from 2019 to 2024. The blue line represents MHEC projections. So you'll note in the first, at 12,655 headcount in fall 2019, as with every other, pretty much, community college and other colleges in the country, enrollment took a nosedive toward fall 2022 with COVID. However, you have a really, a nice kind of rebound between 2022 and 2023, back up to about 11,158 headcount. And this is where the MHEC projections and what we are seeing diverge. MHEC projects enrollment for headcount and FTE for 10 years in advance, but they're always kind of lagging by a year in terms of their numbers. So the last number that MHEC had, it was a reality check, a real number, was fall 2023. They then projected that by fall 2024, there would be over 13,000 headcount at the college, which was actually about 1,700 headcount more than in actuality, that what really, really happened in 2024. After that, MHEC projected from fall 2024 through 20, fall 2034, rather, sorry, that enrollment would only grow about 2.5%, recognizing the fact that we're coming to that demographic cliff, I think most people have heard about, where the number of high school students has dropped significantly or is going to stay flat. And so we're anticipating that enrollment will be maybe a little more difficult to achieve growth in. However, if you take a look at the orange line, we're projecting that we are going to grow roughly 5% over the next 10 years. We feel very strongly that with the new HLSP building, which is still a We feel very strongly that with the new HLSP building, which is still, um, attracting more and more students and some expansion and growth in some of those health courses with the renovation of Dragon and the new, um, science facilities, um, and other, and the new HCAT and other work that's going to be done and that we're going to be proposing to be done over the next 10 years. We have both feel comfortable, um, here at James Z and at the college, that a five percent increase is reasonable. Now that is still almost fifteen hundred headcount less than what M hack was projecting, um, in thirty thirty-four, uh, twenty thirty-four, but we, we feel, um, good about that. M hack has always been very, very aggressive in their enrollment headcount. And so we're still well below what they said. So we know that M cat will accept this as a practical, um, reality in terms of, uh, growth. Are there any questions about that? Because that is kind of a lot of, of information. Okay, someone has their hand up? I can't hear anybody.
No, just keep, no, no hands up.
Okay, no hand, okay, so I see this hand in my, in my face. Okay. All right, next, please. Okay, as I mentioned, we're, um, looking at the, um, report that the engineers, um, provided for Phil's, these facilities assessment report. And what you're seeing basically is a result of what we call the, um, facilities condition index. That basically you take a look at the replacement cost. It's a ratio of the replacement cost of a building to the amount of money that is anticipated to be needed to keep it in shape, to bring it up to being in good, good or excellent condition. So, um, we have excellent, good and fair, our ratings. And of course, the big building in the front is the HLSP, and that is excellent. Now, it's important to also know that when you talk about this, this, um, this index, places like the plant, the, the facilities plant building is also listed as excellent because that building is a very simple building, relatively speaking. It's got, if it, if the exterior is in good shape and there's not a whole lot of, of interior partitions and other things inside that they're looking at. Um, there's not a whole lot of work that needs to be done on the interior of that building. Then it's going to come away with an excellent rating. Um, and then other buildings, for example, some of the buildings that are considered in fair condition, which is fair to poor, um, are the annex buildings A and B, which were temporary buildings that have not remained very temporary. They've been around for a very long time and we're hoping to retire them. And also the Pascal Theater, which also needs some renovations and work. You'll note that, um, right now we're showing Dragon and the SSVC. And over on the right in that little insert, Floristano is white buildings. That's because they weren't included in the FCI, um, um, ratings because they are going to be under renovation. We are going to assume for the purposes of this, um, facilities master plan, which is a two thousand twenty-six master plan, that those buildings will all be in excellent condition by the time we finish. So this is just one of the guides that helps us take a look at where we should be focusing some of our attentions as we look at facilities, um, projects or capital projects. The whole idea ideally would be to take, um, facilities condition projects that allow us to maintain the facilities and upgrade them and, and maintain health, safety and welfare, um, to a high level. And then take academic priorities where we need to maybe modify space, update space, um, modify classrooms or transform space entirely through a renovation and merge those all together so that we have, we can, um, say that we are really being true, truly good stewards of the space that currently exists. Next, please. So physical needs summaries, there are, um, many things we heard during our, our interviews and, and our meetings. Um, some of them are, are ongoing, uh, such as creating informal learning spaces throughout the campus, which is one of the things that have been started with NOOCs. Um, those of you who've been through the HLSP, um, building, see all those kinds of spaces everywhere and they're constantly being filled with students. So that's what students are looking for and we're hoping to expand those throughout the campus. Um, but we're, you know, looking at growth in the health and natural science courses, as I mentioned, potential expansion of the dental hygiene, um, program. We're looking for growth and realignment of the building trades programs in the CCIT as that building, um, is maybe renovated a bit to, to more, um, be more, um, useful for things like, uh, building programs, building trade programs as opposed to carpentry programs, um, and maintaining that current on campus, online course modalities. So one of the things, um, the last bullet you'll see here is reducing the GBT's foot footprint. Um, potentially that has a potential. Next slide, please. Uh, there's potential to co-locate or, and or partner with the Anaroundal Workforce Development Corporation. Um, and Melissa, would you like to say anything about this while we're here? Unless maybe you already said something about it earlier?
Sure, Jean. Um, so one, a couple of items of note. Glen Burnie Town Center is a county owned building. This is different from eight, pardon me, from HCAT, which is down the street. Okay, so Glen Burnie Town Center, the building you see, the big building, county owned building. It's underutilized by us. It's, it's been, been very successful for, um, English learning language programs, et cetera. Uh, but, and, and some other, uh, programs, it's underutilized. So in this analysis, we've been talking about and through other mechanisms, there's been an opportunity for us to think about, hmm, AAWDC, Anaroundal Workforce Development Corporation, which has wonderful, obviously workforce and community development programs, is looking for, uh, they're in lease space, I believe, and that lease is coming up soon. So between, and they've been asking us for space in this building. Um, between our underutilization, it's a county building in AAWDC looking for new space. We feel like it's a wonderful opportunity to partner with AAWDC. They have a big footprint, so they would occupy a good bit, but we would have probably, I don't know, five classrooms, some student services space, et cetera. So we could continue our programs there, be more efficient in the space and bring in this wonderful partner that we could partner with, that folks who visit the building can partner with. It'd be visibility for our program, so it feels like a win-win. Uh, devils in the details, and we are having fantastic conversations with the county about timing and the funding for the build out. Uh, that's, conversations continue. You may recall that the county is going to be upgrading the HVAC system in this building, um, beginning this summer and probably taking a year plus, uh huh. And therefore, our presence there will be much decreased because it's noisy, it's messy while they're doing that HVAC work. We were hoping that perhaps the county would have the funding and the ability to, while that HVAC work was happening, to do the build out for us and for AAWDC. So when the HVAC project has come in, AAWDC could move in, et cetera. It's just going to be too much for the county to get it designed in time. It's fixing to start any, you know, in a couple of months. So the timing, what will probably happen is the HVAC work will happen. The building will reopen and we'll have our presence there. And then downstream, probably with the new accounting administration, we'll have to continue those talks about how we implement this concept of co-location with AAWDC and AACC. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate that. So we're still, so that's kind of an ongoing discussion. Um, but as, as Melissa said, the building is, is going to be worked on soon. So there's going to be a much smaller footprint, so we'll get a handle a little bit more on how well, um, that works for the college, having a smaller footprint. And then at Arundel Mills, um, that's another facility, it's being underutilized at the moment. Um, and we really, it's, it's such a great location, it'd be a perfect kind of hub for the college, but we really need to, um, figure out what the highest and best goals are for that particular building. We're having conversations with, uh, the deans and the, the steering committee, um, and the provost about what, what would be best to be located in that facility. So those, those discussions are also ongoing. Um, we'll see how far those get, uh, before we're at the end of this, um, um, excuse me, master plan. But again, even though the draft is going to be going in, in May, we will have time before the end of the year to incorporate any new, um, decisions, um, that might be made in both of those facilities. Okay, next, please. And Sarah's up.
Hi, everyone. Can we do a quick audio check? Can I be heard? Okay?
You're fine.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so yesterday, Jean and I conducted planning workshops with the president's cabinet. And we, as everybody said, had a pretty good time doing it. Uh, we talked about the projects that are already in the hopper, Floristano, Dragon, HCAT, and then ultimately an SSVC renovation to create student engagement space. And our priority was to figure out everybody's sort of level of importance for the next two capital projects, plus a series of smaller projects that the college could do independently, perhaps with or without additional funding. Where would do people see it's most important? Or, you know, perhaps student engagement space, creating more of those study NOOCs or improving outdoor, uh, gathering areas, providing single occupant toilet rooms. We heard many things in our interviews and all of these are reflected in the prioritization exercise. Next slide, please. Our project timeline, uh, and this is not for the J and Z project. It's for all of your capital projects that are coming along. So we reflected the four that are already in planning stages up top, Floristano, Dragon, HCAT and the SSVC. And as you can see, the timeline of these takes, it takes a while. The pink box shows when does a college expect to submit the documentation to the state for funding? Then there's a lag while it's reviewed. And then the orange parts show when does a project go into design? Blue is construction and green is final occupancy. So these four projects that are already planned are going to go until the middle of twenty thirty-one, which means that we won't really see any new and exciting projects beyond these until the second half of this FMP. So we explained that very much to, you know, the campus and, you know, the college community to say, you're, you have many new projects already coming along, lots of really great strategic renovations and renewals. And what we're looking at is the next step of your plan, the, the second half. So you'll see the prioritization at the bottom of the next capital project, one, next capital project, two. We also want to talk a little bit about the, uh, math renovation, which is coming up in the middle. Any questions about our timeline?
I, I just want to add that along the bottom of the timeline, you'll notice facilities condition project estimates. Now, these are estimates that include everything from replacing, um, air handling units and boilers and roofs to, uh, painting and refreshing and new carpeting. So, um, and you'll note it that the first, between now, two thousand twenty-four and two thousand thirty-one, which is the midpoint of the facilities master plan, there, the estimate had been over forty-two, almost forty-three million dollars. Now, you never do all your facilities mass, master plan project, uh, facilities condition projects. Some of them fall by the wayside. Many of them will be wrapped up within some of the, um, projects, uh, that are being talked about. But it is a big number. Uh, and then the last half of the master plan, the second half, the total is about twenty-two point six million. So when we're talking about, finally, when we finally prioritize all these projects and make an implementable plan, we're going to be folding in a lot of those projects that are standalone projects related to mechanical systems and fireproof, you know, fire prevention, et cetera, into the plan, which is, um, something that's vitally important to make sure that it's implementable. Thank you, Sarah.
Next slide, then. If we look at our whole site plan, you'll see the icons that we've put on, and those represent the, uh, givens, things that we assume will be already completed by the time we start these projects that we'll be prioritizing. So the renovation of SSVC would be complete. Dragon renovation would be complete and the Floristano renovations will be complete. The little S's that you see all around are identifying opportunities for additional study and gathering space. Uh, we know that those, you have proven that creating those in, in existing spaces is something that can be done to create a really, uh, vibrant and popular place for gathering and study in an existing building. And we will recommend places to put more of those in. That's what the little S's indicate. But the one to keep your eye on now is the M, uh, down on the bottom center. This is the math building. And one of the givens of this project is that math is going to relocate because until we find them a new home, uh, we would be really hard pressed to phase a renovation of that math and CDC building. And that building is very much in need of renovation. Next slide. Let's talk about the SSVC renovation. This building will be vacant, uh, after the Floristano, uh, HCAT and Dragon projects are complete. So, um, the next one that is on the, on deck here is the SSVC. And it's an ideal place to create student engagement space. It's right where the bridge to West Campus comes in and approaches the main heart of campus. So it's a very central location. So in two thousand twenty-one, we proposed turning it over to student life and student engagement. And while the floor plan might change between now and when construction starts, we're imagining some game space, student government space, student life offices, health and wellness offices, as well as upstairs, veteran center, a dean suite, and some of the student support things like the food pantry or clothing closet. And if you see on the right side, it says connection to the student union. If we go to the next slide, we'll see some potential to repurpose the second floor of the student union to, you know, it's already, it's, it's become used for some administrative functions. And once those are able to move out to Floristano, we can turn it back into student use space, student engagement space. So these pink areas will be available, uh, to sort of fold into that engagement, activities, recreation type space, and we'll bring in some more complimentary users. Next slide, please. Oh, that's one. There we go. Thank you. All right, so we talked that one of the givens is relocating the math department. And right now they're in space. It is pretty substandard. They're a bit cramped in that math building and they're all in one big open space with workstations. Not a lot of privacy for their offices. Uh, and it's time for them to get an update and also to be in one location. Right now, the math lab is over in the careers building and the staff offices and dedicated classrooms are in another building. So one of the common threads of all of these, uh, options is that the math department is all in one place. Math lab, math staff and math dedicated classrooms are all together. We looked at the careers building, so where the existing math lab already is, pulling the math faculty and instruction space to there. We also looked at the humanities building, some vacant space will be available there, uh, when the HCAT labs move out. And, uh, we can repurpose that space. It's right along the quad for math offices and then create a math lab in some other areas nearby. And then we threw a kind of wild card in there. What if math moved over to West Campus into the cult area? And all of that activity could re-energize the atrium there because there used to be Chick-fil-A there. So everybody wanted to go. And now that Chick-fil-A has moved, that atrium is not feeling the level of, you know, excitement that it used to. Maybe driving some of the very busy math areas over there, you know, it could drive some activity to cult. So we presented this to the president's cabinet and we had, uh, online voting that was available. The results were available in real time. And so if we go to the next slide.
Before, before we go to the next slide, can I just, okay, I'd like to add a couple of things. Um, some of the differences between these options, um, and the reason I think you'll see, um, why the results came in the way they did, is that, um, there are varying levels of complexity depending on which option is selected. So in the first one for the careers building, that space, I think is, um, Sarah mentioned, is going to be vacated. The space that you see, the light blue at the top is where the existing math lab is. And then there's about five offices in the middle bar where the, um, faculty, the math staff are currently located at, at work in the, the lab. The rest of those, um, spaces along the right side of the building are currently, um, lab space that will be used for the Dragon renovation. So while, while Dragon's being renovated, the labs will be utilized. When they, when Dragon's completed, they'll be vacated. So they'll be empty and it'll be a relatively simple matter to renovate that space for, um, for math. Uh, and then they will all be consolidated and they'll just move in and everything will be done. If they move into the humanities building, if math moves to humanities, um, one of the, the issues is they're going to have to, we're going to displace the existing dean of liberal arts office suite. We have to move them elsewhere within the building as well as, um, communications lab that is well utilized. It would have to be recreated someplace else before we could renovate the space for math. So that is a little bit more complex. It takes a little bit longer and it'll cost a little bit more money. And then finally, if we move them to the cult building, that would necessitate moving all of the, um, continuing education workforce development staff someplace else, probably to one of the annexes that are kind of older and kind of outliers, um, and also some of the IT staff. Um, reorganizing that, redoing the space and then moving math into that space. Um, the challenge would be that, um, we'd want to do something for the continuing education workforce development, not leave them kind of hanging out in marginal space. So that the opportunity would be to renovate Johnson, the Johnson building for the CEWD. But that starts to bring another whole building renovation into the lineup, which then starts to, you know, kind of dictate how those prioritization of projects might occur. So those are the things that we were thinking of. And I just want to point out, um, that you'll, you'll notice in the cult building, there's some yellow in, in the atrium and those little S's are kind of, are little pods that we are suggesting to help kind of enliven that space. Okay, sorry, just next, please.
All right, so if everyone's ready for the results, uh, we can go to the next slide and find out what the president's cabinet suggested. All right, so the, the careers building, lower level that is, will be serving as Dragon's swing space, but could easily be converted over to math offices, classrooms and the existing math lab. That was what everybody preferred by quite a large measure, the seventy-two percent. So while the other two options are, you know, grayed out, this one really looks like the most implementable and flexible option long term for moving math, uh, least disruption to the campus and, uh, the most cost effective option in terms of our preliminary estimates.
Any thoughts or questions about that particular selection? Nope, okay.
No, I think we're good.
If I can just tie, oh, sorry, sorry.
So I have a suggestion, I guess, kind of more towards the cult building. So if the goal is to also, because I know you guys are moving. So I have a suggestion, I guess, kind of more towards the cult building. So if the goal is to also, because I know you guys are moving the math building. But if the goal is to also kind of increase traction, I mean, the trends are. From what I've seen, like the HLISB building has the Chick-fil-A, the careers building has the subway. So maybe adding something, because I know they have an area for it there would kind of increase, um, student activity in those areas.
Yes, that actually, we looked at that and, um, the challenge has been getting a vendor for there. As well as some of the, uh, we just learned yesterday, some of the, I think, health department, um, regulations have changed. Since Chick-fil-A was over there and, um, they, there would be a fair amount of. Work necessary to provide the infrastructure to properly have a cafe there. But we're hopeful, as you'll see when, um, in just a minute, when Sarah talks about the possible renovations for the math building. That we would get a vendor on campus running a cafe. And they could potentially have a satellite there in that vending area. Um, you know, some of the work being done, that might be more of a coffee, tea, grab and go type of space. So there's also the potential for, um, a high level vending area. I mean, they have robotic vending machines now that prepare salads and all kinds of things. So there's some opportunity and, and we agree with you completely that we need, you know, food, bring food and they will come generally. Um, so I think, I think that, you know, that, that is something that we were looking for, for that space as well.
No, I, I agree. I was thinking Starbucks too or something because I actually go to classes over there and it's very empty in that atrium, um, a lot of the time.
Yeah.
If I can add to that, I can't emphasize enough. That the challenge, as Jean mentioned, the challenge with getting vendors, we have been trying. Four years and working one person in particular, it's like his full-time job. To court vendors who are interested that we're so fortunate. We have Subway and Chick-fil-A. I'm stunned. Because our business model, um, they're for profit, right? They're. And, um, we don't have folks here on the weekends. Our classes generally run. Uh, Mondays through Thursdays. It's quiet Friday, Saturday, Sunday, not evenings quieter. So think about when you would. Frequent those places, right? Think of Chick-fil-A with two drive-throughs and, you know, it's going, so. For a vendor to come and for example, be in cult. When we start to, they're excited to come here, but then we start to lay out the schedule and the data. It doesn't make sense for them to come here. So we continue to look for options. But, and, and trust that we are, um, but it's very challenging from a business model perspective. We hear you. We would like them to be here too, but they have to be willing to come.
No, and that makes sense. Thank you so much.
Very good. Alright, if we're ready for the next slide. Alright, so our site plan here now shows what do we propose to go into the maths CDC building once math has relocated. Relocated to the careers. Uh, there is a building over by the annexes, a temporary building called the resource management building. And it's marked as R E S M and the LRM group currently has offices there. We've shown this pink arrow shifting up, shifting them up into the math building and then another arrow green coming in from the upper right. Upper left side. Um, and that's the book, the bookstore. Right now, the bookstore is in the student union. You have to walk through the bookstore to get to dining. So, you know, there are challenges to that. The first of them really being inventory control. But then also your dining is a little bit buried back behind the bookstore. So we were thinking, let's pull those into. The math building. You can see all of those parking lots funneling past the math building. Between the library and the humanities building. To get into the heart of campus. And so that's a lot of foot traffic. And it'd be a great place to put a bookstore and then potentially a cafe. We look at the next slide. Oh, next slide. There we go. Thank you. Uh, you can see how the first floor of this math and CDC building could work out. The blue shows where the bookstore is and if the main entrance was off a little patio, right now there's a playground there. So we could create a terrace with some shaded seating. Uh, and a main entrance to the bookstore, the cashier would be able to oversee the entrance and everybody's traffic through the bookstore. And then on the right side in the green, we're showing a little cafe. And, uh, and that, as we said, if there's food, everybody will be there. You can walk past, get your coffee and your breakfast and then move on to your class. And we think this would be a great way to energize this gateway to the campus, which is right now, uh, the playground and sort of the back of the math building.
I just need to clarify, we did remove the playground, so it's mulch right now. There is no. Um, there is no playground in case anybody was looking for it.
Yeah.
Sorry. So if I could, uh, ask a question, Devin, um, being a student. The parking lot, there's a lot of traffic presumably from the parking lot in towards the library and then into campus. So the location of the books, this suggestion is a good idea, do you think? What's your reaction to this?
I, I would think so because I mean, if you're going on like main campus, it's always that loop. So you're always going to pass back. Uh, majority of students on main campus, uh, will park in the A and B parking lots because that's where I park too. There's a lot of traffic there. And then all, even the students who are going to West Campus have to go through that way anyway. So it's right there. So I, I would agree. That's a great spot for it.
And that's a really good point. I think so, you know, we can talk about some interventions at that point as well, flashing light, a raised table for, um, you know, kind of. Showing that it's a pedestrian, um, way, a walkway, that kind of thing. So, um, when that, when that project is. Considered and in design, that should be part of that.
Pedestrian safety measures, you mean? Yes.
Right, next.
Yes, next slide. I don't know if I'm waiting for it to switch or if, did you hear next slide? There we go. Thank you. So looking at the upper level of math CDC building, it's not terribly exciting, but there is some opportunities for great office space. And so we can move the LRM offices back into the main core of campus from that remote, uh, temporary building. And so the pink area is what you see there. And then there's available office space across the hall. And a lot of potential users for that, potentially the chief compliance officer or the events office. Uh, the manager for events, that would be a good place, a good. Uh, use of that blue space up there. So there are multiple administrative, non-student facing functions that could go up there.
In addition, they could put, put hoteling space, another meeting space. Up in that vicinity, which would be an ideal location above a cafe. And you come to campus for a meeting, you grab your coffee, you go upstairs for a meeting, then you go to your, your office on campus. Um, so next, please. So let's talk a little bit about the student union. Um. The student union right now is, is one of the hubs for the campus, but the dining area is a little bit dated. It's a bit more like a high school cafeteria. You can see the picture on the, um, the left hand picture down below the map. Um, and as, as Sarah mentioned, the bookstore is, um, a little bit of a challenge in terms of inventory control and just, it's also oversized. It's bigger than it needs to be. So we are assuming now that the bookstore is moved out, um, to the, uh, the math building, which will have to be renamed, of course. Uh, what we're proposing is the renovation of the entire student union building. The idea would be that once the bookstore is closed or moved out, we can now start to shift where the dining is located. Um, and actually, if you, oh, the next slide, please. Um, the kitchen right now, one of the, one of, some of the facilities, um, projects that were identified by the engineers were replacing a lot of the equipment in that facility. Um, in the next five, nine, five, 10 years, it's going to definitely need to be renovated. So the idea would be to kind of flop the building in terms of purpose. So on the lower level where the bookstore is, we'd have dining, but it would be like a collegial dining facility. With, um, high-top tables and counter tables and, and banquettes and the things that students really want, a thing that makes them feel more comfortable. Um, and the space, when you, um, take a look at the space that's actually used in the existing dining hall and move that over to where the bookstore is. It's, it's equivalent. So we're not reducing the size or the number of seating at all. Uh, then the kitchen server would be, um, switched over. And then that huge area that's now used as the dining facility could be transformed into an excellent meeting slash event space. There currently you can see on the image, the columns are shown by those black dots. Um, so we believe since it's an only one-story space, that some of that structure could be removed. And so therefore we open up that whole facility significantly, um, to provide a great, great location for student events, community events, campus events. Um, and then there also the possibility that we might be able to have it so it could be partitioned off as well. So it could not only function as one large meeting space. But also as multiple smaller meeting spaces. Um, we know that the college does have conferencing opportunities sometimes, um, to come to campus and this would facilitate that. It's as well. And in the upper right-hand corner, you kind of see that cheap plan of the second floor. This is when, um, it would be ideal then to modify. The second floor as well as the first floor all at the same time because HVAC systems would have to be modified, et cetera. And that's when we would say bringing in other, other functions such as the school newspaper and this, the, um, AMRAM, which is the literary, um. Uh, facility, literary publication of the campus and other student-related, student-focused, um, functions to consolidate them all. So now we have. The SSVC would be the student engagement space, the ladder space. And then you'd have this, um, with the, the news, the student union completely renovated. And really focused on student engagement and success. Any questions? Nope. Okay. No, okay. So you can see, we've been having some fun. Um, okay, next slide, please. Okay, this is a project that, um, came through from the, the two thousand and twenty-one update for the master plan. This was the, um, the second in priority for the, uh, president's cabinet yesterday. The, uh, the student union, they identified as the most, um, the highest priority and then this was second. Um, the up, upper portion of the gymnasium building has been modified when we took the pool out and then put in a new fitness center. Uh, but the building itself has some serious problems with humidity control. The HVAC system is old and that's some of the, the, the most, um. And most important, um, impressing, uh, facilities, conditions, projects on the campus is updating the mechanical systems in this building. So this is the lower level. Currently, the existing locker rooms are oversized. Uh, they're not utilized well. Students are not going and using and taking showers and things like that in, um. In these, in gymnasiums anymore and that's nationwide, uh, it's just not the way things are going. So what we're proposing is that areas that you see are that are left white would remain the same, but they would get upgrades. Not only to the mechanical systems, but also, um, lighting, paint, et cetera. Uh, the areas that you see that are colored would be transformed into team locker rooms. Um, officials locker rooms, an office area of consolidated office area for the, um, faculty and staff. A gender, uh, neutral toilet and, um, locker facilities as well as improved laundry. Um, and a health and fitness multipurpose room. This would also facilitate, um, help the campus with its requirements for a division two. Currently, they, they make accommodation for, um, changing rooms for officials, but they're not ideal. And this will provide designated spaces for officials. So not only would this, um, allow us to take care of some. Uh, inefficiencies and deficits within the building itself in terms of facilities, but also provide better space that supports. Student engagement, courses, athletics, um, and just basically improving student and fa- and staff life. So, next, please. Another, um, capital project we identified deals with the library, but it's a much smaller project. Uh, right now in yellow, you see the existing, um, uh, teaching learning center, the TLC. And that is currently underutilized. I don't know whether it's because there's students have their own, uh. Computers or they're accessing computers elsewhere. Um, but a lot of those stations are, are empty. So we decided that, uh, we would propose. That we reutilize about half of that space. Next, please. So there's two options we, we came up with for just this area. The first would be to relocate tutoring from careers. To this space in, in the library. There's already some tutoring staff and tutoring that's accomplished within the library and it's always a very good mix to have tutoring in the library. So this would work, work very, very well and open up some space within careers, um, for more academic space and expansion of some of the programs over there. Next, please. And the other, um, other option, which, um, actually is, it's one of the things we heard the most about. The library has student study space. Most of the spaces are two to four seats. Um, they're really missing that ability to, um, house larger groups, you know, students are coming into study in groups because a lot of work now, of course, is collaborative in courses. So we're looking for, um, study spaces that can accommodate six to eight students. So right now you can see, um, where that red dot is. Um, there's a bunch of stacks in this smaller kind of narrow space. We propose moving those stacks over to that half of the, the TLC space. Next, please. And then creating five larger group study rooms in this particular space. Um, it would be nice and quiet. Um, uh, it's a good location for them. And then, um, so now we would have, we would not lose any of the stacks because we spoke with the library staff. And they have really culled the collection down to where they believe it's going to be maintained about the level that it is. So we can't, we can't eliminate stacks. But this, um, particular option of creating more study space, um, received the priority vote for small projects from the president, president's cabinet yesterday. So, moving on.
So at our final exercise with the president's cabinet, uh, was to prioritize some of these. They're not all small projects, so they're independent projects that wouldn't necessarily be tied to swing space needs or project sequencing. But they're projects that were identified as important by the students or in our interviews, things that people requested for their academic programs and their. You know, just experience, improving the experience on campus. But then there are other important ones to address facilities maintenance, for example, wayfinding and accessibility, uh, creating the single-use. Single occupant restrooms campus-wide. So if you want to take a few minutes and just look at this to see what types of things are included in there and making space for art. We heard that, uh, students often come and ask for a place to make a mural or put a sculpture. And so we reflected that here that there should be place, a place for it and also a plan for it to make sure that, uh, it is where it belongs. And that it meets, you know, the sort of standards of the college. Putting additional study and meeting spaces, those pods that we talked about. More bike racks and, uh, multimodal transportation amenities. Outdoor fitness and, uh, sort of different recreation options came up. The students really enjoyed. So our exercise with the students was they came up to a board like this. And put a sticker on the things that they were interested in seeing and that they would like to see on the campus. And the, uh, fitness and recreation amenities got a lot of likes on that. A food truck was suggested on the West Campus and then just general improvement of outdoor gathering spaces. You have some. Really lovely quads and good shade and a nice natural environment and improving those to make them more useful. Down on the building and site areas, uh, really some practical things, things that wouldn't be evident, you know, as a, as a real great building improvement to someone walking in the building. But improving the HVAC, the controls, the lighting, uh, really important things to upgrade the buildings and make them more efficient. Uh, upgrading, updating, standardizing instructional environments, including the instructional equipment. And then another big one, modernizing the buildings for efficiency, aesthetics and accessibility. And you can see how these sort of pulled along to the right side, uh, different options for office suites. Wayfinding, accessibility, then down on the bottom into some specific academic programs we heard about. There's a. An arts integration hub that needs a permanent home, expanding the offerings at the CCIT to include things like, uh, electrical training. Uh, and then also adding air conditioning to those labs, an important factor. Then we heard about multiple, uh, individual academic programs that were requesting just. Space changes or some additional space. And so our next slide, please. We polled everyone to please mark their five favorite, not favorite, five most prioritized options. And this is what we ended up with. Um, on the top line, additional study and social spaces. Create a food truck corral on the West Campus and that might help alleviate some of the, uh, challenges of trying to find a permanent, uh, vendor to occupy that space indoors. And then improving your outdoor, uh, gathering and, uh, recreation study spaces. So the top three in the building and site category are really facilities-related renewal of your existing buildings. Uh, modernizing your HVAC, updating your classrooms and your instructional equipment. And then looking at the buildings as a whole to, uh, make them more efficient and, uh, attractive and accessible. And then in terms of the academic programs, a lot of those projects that were suggested are pretty small. But a big one would be to expand the offerings at the CCIT and provide air conditioning. So with these selections made, that's not to say that none of the other ones would take place. Uh, the facilities team at AACC will look at all of this array as a guide to say. These are things that were asked for and then these are the things that are prioritized. But every now and then. They'll have some money available to do a smaller project and that might be a time when they say, oh, we could put a nice study, study pergola out on the quad and that would start to. You know, improve that outdoor space for everybody. Um, or, you know, we have, we have the money or the, you know, resources to improve some HVAC. Where it's needed. So we could do that work too. So this is.
I think we're getting close to it. We're getting close to our timeline here, so.
Yep. Okay. So this was the result of our work there. And our next slide, please. Alright, so now you see our timeline updated and it has the first two capital projects in the mix. Which was to renovate, renovate the student union, first and second floors and to renovate the lower level of the gym. Uh, those were the two that were prioritized and then. Those were the two that were prioritized and then, and we would have those starting in the mid 2030s with the submittals up to MPAC. And if we go on next. We've got some information on how much things are expected to cost. We've done preliminary project cost estimates. The Dragon renovation, we can see, is already estimated, it coming up on nearly $60 million. The Floristana renovation, coming up between 10 and 20 million dollars. HCAT relocation at about 10 and then the SSVC renovation, also about 10. You'll notice there are gray bars at the end of the blue. The gray part represents the facilities maintenance projects that will be bundled up into the capital project. So this is where Jean had said, it's a strategic way to get your facilities' needs met while improving the space and creating the, the space allocation adjustments that you need.
Sarah, sir, these are now, it's important to note, $20, $25? And are these construction projects or total project costs?
These are the total project costs, so, yep. I, you know, Jean, I would like to look back on that, but as I remember from the estimator, they do include the total project cost. But let me, let me be, let me be sure.
I just wanted to bring this up to everybody, because obviously escalation is significant. We've noticed since, since COVID, construction costs have gone up almost 40%. So I think that, as, while you're seeing these numbers here, and these are preliminary, please don't think that this is going to be the final number you're going to see in the master plan, because it may be escalated.
Yes, absolutely. So if we look at the math relocation to careers, the cost to redo the space is sort of minimal, but if we were to bundle in careers renovations with that, that building had a lot of needs. And so that pops it up in terms of, you know, the gray part brings it up to a nearly $10 million project. And then renovating the math and CDC building comes up there also. So those, that building is on the table and we know that that renovation will occur. But then the student union renovation, first and second floor, getting to be about a $15 million project when we put in the facilities maintenance, maintenance needs. And the gym renovation, about seven and a half million dollars. And then by, as a matter of scale, you can see how the smaller projects that we discussed in the prioritization slide, you know, come in as a, you know, smaller bits, much easier to accomplish those in a smaller.
Projects.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just thinking, independent, that was the word I was looking for, independent projects.
Next slide, please.
All right, so these are your facilities maintenance estimates that came from your consultant. The top two bars combined all of the facilities maintenance projects together. And then we looked at the ones that could be affected by other projects, such as the Careers Building. Some of that work could be accomplished when math moves in. And that's represented by the, the blue slash in the bar. So there really is a range of how much your facilities maintenance costs could be. So 11.2 million to 35.3 million is your range of how much all of these projects could cost. So when you compare those to the costs of, say, the Dragon renovation up there approaching $60 million, this is a significant chunk of money that is required just to, you know, maintain your facilities, keep the systems operating as they should, and keep the buildings ready to move on into the future with you.
And I just want to reiterate something that I said before, next slide, please, that no college ever does all of its facility condition projects, ever, within a 10-year master plan. So, you know, some things may fall down by the wayside, become less important, other priorities might rise up in the next 10 years. So again, flexibility is important in the master plan and that's what we're aiming for. The next steps, and this will be to update capital projects, any of these capital projects, as discussed, anything we hear from you, whether right now or in the future, after you've had a chance to think about this a little bit more, will be updating the cost estimates as necessary and then developing an implementation plan that really recommends and lays out how these might function in more detail than that timeline we've shared with you so far. And also starts incorporating some of the facilities condition projects that we know definitely have to occur, like the replacement of the Careers roof, et cetera. And that's a $2.5 million project, I believe, so that has to be factored into our, our thinking. And then we have the next meeting with the student committee, we're presenting all of this information and again, trying to be on campus in April. And that's it for us. I know we've been like five minutes over, I think. But we thank you for your attention and do you have any questions or thoughts on what you've seen?
Any questions? No, I think we're good. Thank you so very, very much. This was amazing.
Thank you very much. We, we've been enjoying ourselves quite a bit and we look forward to working to complete the plan for you. Okay, take care, everyone.
Good, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Is there anything else?
No. That's our planned agenda.
Okay, yes. Yes.
I'd like to say, Melissa and your staff, thank you. I finally get it. I got the budget fine.
After help.
Stay after for the test.
With Melissa's tutoring over the years, I think it was an excellent presentation. I didn't have any questions. You had them all in there, so thank you so much.
So before we adjourn, I would just like to say thank you to trustee Ublah for doing the heavy lift. I do recall Melissa saying it would be not burdensome. And so there we go on that. And I think, does anybody have any business? No? So we are adjourned.